Article eighteen, the deletion of the indemnification I O D bylaw review board article sixteen. This is the third and final reading. Any questions, comments on this? Okay, Mr. Town Manager, do you have anything else to add? I know we, our last question was about the union. But go ahead.
Yes, and you should have all received an email and, or at least information in your packet, showing you a copy of the email exchange that I have with the union president firefighter Gary Peck, as well as a copy of a letter drafted by their council, which acknowledged that they had no issue with the interpretation of the union contract going forward relative to the I O D board. So, as I previously indicated, I had spoken with the union president, the police department, as well as the fire department. There wasn't a formal vote with either one, but there was a vote this last time with the fire department. And that was a question that came from several counselors, so I think you should have all the information you need. And I won't reiterate the reasons why we put this forward to you before, but I do think it is in the best interest of all of our EMS personnel that would be covered by the statute that we can expedite these claims in efficient, cost-effective manner.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair through you. Is it article sixteen or article seventeen?
It's, I believe the Roman numerals, if I may, Mr. Chairman, are article seventeen and I can, I don't know if we have it here. I can pull it up on one of the prior ones, but it should, I believe it was listed as article seventeen, X V one one. For those of you at home who can't see the Roman numerals, but that should be, yeah, and it is in my memorandum. It still is part of the material, so it is article seventeen.
I'll just change it in the, in the vote on the, on the vote on the next one. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? And stand a motion on number nineteen, the town council. And this was taken out of the town Southbridge bylaws and the right way to formulate changes to the bylaws of code of bylaws, not the zoning bylaws, but code of bylaws. Town council of the town of Southbridge in the exercise of powers conferred on it by section eight of article eighty-nine of the amendments to the state constitution and by its own home rule charter is hereby adopting and enacted the following, to amend the code of bylaws of the town of Southbridge by deleting the indemnification I O D bylaw review board article seventeen. Is there a motion?
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? And my understanding, the reason this goes that way is in some towns, bylaws have to go to the attorney general's office for review, but in town of Southbridge, they don't because of the way they're adopted through the home rule charter. So that's why there is, so fortunately, so I, I researched that a little bit and we had postponed this from the last meeting, so we do have the format correct on how to do the motion on it. Is there any further discussion? An unroll call.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Counselor Patrana?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Your law?
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Counselor Steve?
Yes.
And Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Town Manager, we look forward to how this will improve efficiencies in that handling of those, those reviews. Looking forward to that. Okay.
Thank you.
Counselor Marquetti, are you gonna do the same thing you did the other day on the reading?
Yep.
All right.
I sure will.
While he's setting that, Mr. Chairman, can I ask a quick question?
Uh, yeah, I'm just gonna, yeah, go ahead. Quick question, go ahead.
Just clarification. If we're proposing amendments or Maureen wants to make some comments on not this particular one, but the other one, um, do we do that before we do the reading or after it?
I would say after the reading.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Because it's the reading first. That would be my take on it. All right, uh, this is amendments to Southbridge zoning bylaw introducing added section nine point three American optical flex overlay zone. This first reading was on January twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one, second reading February eighth, two thousand twenty-one. This is the third and final reading, February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one, and I do see that the planning board members are here. So, uh, we'll take any comments from the planning board after the reading, I guess. Larry, is that good? Good with that? Okay, all right, uh, Counselor Marquetti?
All right, thank you. Section nine point three, American optical flex overlay district. Section nine point three point one, intent. A. The intent of the American optical flex overlay district here and after referred to as AO fold is to provide the opportunity to fully utilize former mill structures and related properties that are part of the town's landscape, character, and history. They are also places of economic activity and economic opportunity. Specifically, this bylaw is intended to, one, provide maximum flexibility for the development and enhancement of AO fold properties. Two, retain the potential for business and industrial development while permitting residential development. Three, foster a greater opportunity for creative development which encourage a mix of uses, residential, commercial, and industrial. Four, enhance business vitality and provide employment opportunities. Five, enhance and protect the town tax revenues. And six, encourage the development of flexible space for small and emerging businesses. Section nine point three point two, general requirements. A. All uses shall be served by public water and sewer. B. All developments shall be reviewed for compatibility with the Southbridge master plan and be supportive of the public health, general welfare, and safety of the community, including adequate provisions of public facilities and a minimum number of access points on existing roads. C. The board may, at its discretion, hire a third-party consultant, also acceptable to the applicant, to aid the board in its review of any proposed use or site. The fees charged by the third-party consultant shall be borne by the applicant. D. Uses currently allowed by special permit may continue. Uses allowed by right in the underlying zone may be developed by the securing of a site plan review through the planning board. Any changes to a special permit use will require a new special permit complying with these bylaws. Section nine point three point three, allowable uses by special permit. A. All industrial, commercial, and residential uses not prohibited under section nine point three point four, subject to the performance and compatibility standards in section nine point three point five in this section, and the application and permitting requirements of subsection nine point three point six are permitted by special permit. B. Within the AO fold, there shall be no restriction on combining different categories of use, provided such uses conform with the compatibility and performance standards found in section nine point three point five within the same building, except any imposed by the state building code or other federal, state, or local bylaws. C. An erosion and sedimentation control plan shall be required when the proposed development will result in a disturbed area that is cumulatively more than one-half acre in size, or when the board determines that special site conditions warrant such a plan. Section nine point three point four, prohibited uses. A. Adult entertainment uses. B. Animal sales on properties of less than five acres. C. Animal agriculture on properties of less than five acres. D. Automobile or truck sales. E. Bulk storage or manufacture of materials or products that could decompose by detonation. F. Camps, day slash boarding. G. Car wash. H. Cemeteries. I. Collection centers. J. Dog kennels. K. Drive-up services associated with any commercial use other than banks. L. Golf courses. M. Letting of rooms. N. A facility that contains or conducts research involving biological safety level three or the equivalent term risk group three, classification or higher. O. Rendering. P. Rooming and or boarding house excluding dormitories for educational uses. Q. Seasonal camping slash tents. R. Service stations. Section nine point three point five, performance and compatibility standards. A. Compatibility. One. All new uses shall demonstrate to the satisfaction of the board that any such new uses, in addition to meeting the requirements of this section, are compatible with all existing uses. A. Any new buildings or accessory structures shall relate harmoniously to each other with adequate light, air circulation, separation between buildings, and to the extent practicable, shall be in harmony with the existing district. B. Building or structures that are listed on the National Register of Historic Places shall be converted, constructed, reconstructed, restored, or altered to maintain or promote the status of the building or structure on the state or national register of historic places. B. Access and traffic impacts. One. Traffic and safety impacts to the existing and proposed roads shall be minimized. Two. Access shall be provided to the extent feasible through an existing street or driveway. Curb cuts shall be limited. Three. Pedestrian and vehicular traffic shall be separated. Four. Walkways shall be provided for access to adjacent properties and between businesses. C. Nuisance avoidance. One. Uses shall cause no inherent and recurring generated vibration perceptible without instruments at any point between two or more uses or along a property line. Temporary construction is excluded from this restriction. Two. Smoke shall not be visible beyond a shade or darker than number one on the Ringelman smoke chart. Three. Heat and glare generated from within a structure or use shall not be discernible from the outside of any structure. Four. Odor, dust, and fumes shall be effectively combined to the premises or so disposed as to avoid air pollution. Five. No activities involving bulk storage or manufacture of materials or products that could decompose by detonation shall be permitted. These materials include primary explosives such as lead, azide, fulminates, lead, stifene, and tetracyn, high explosives such as TNT, RDX, HMX, PETN, and picric acid, propellants and their components such as dry nitrocellulose, lac powder, boron hydrides, and hydrazine and its derivatives, pyrotechnics and fireworks such as magnesium powder, potassium chlorate, potassium nitrate, blasting explosives such as dynamites and nitroglycerin, unstable organic compounds such as acetylates, tetrazoles, and ozonides, strong oxidizing agents such as liquid oxygen, perchloric acid, perchlorates, chlorates, and hydrogen peroxide in concentrations greater than thirty-five percent, and nuclear fuels, fissionable materials and products and reactor elements such as uranium twenty-three S and plutonium two-three-nine. Utilization of the materials included in this, in this section shall be limited to the minimum quantities necessary for specific research and only after the procurement of all required local, state, and federal permits. Material type, quantity, storage, handling procedures, and location in the facility shall also be registered with the fire department, police department, and the Southbridge planning board. All local, state, and federal disposal procedures must be followed. Six. Any electrical radiation shall not adversely affect at any point any operations or any equipment, including not only professional research equipment, but also equipment reserved for personal uses such as reception of public radio transmissions, use of cellular phones, et cetera, except equipment belonging to the creator of the electrical radiation. All FCC rules and regulations must be followed. Seven. No use abutting residential use shall engage in or cause very loud activities as defined in the Town of Southbridge Code of Ordinances, section seven dash five oh three, between the hours of nine PM of one day and seven AM on the following day. Eight. Non-residential uses shall be designed, constructed, and operated, and hours of operation limited where appropriate so that neighboring residents are not exposed to offensive noise, especially from traffic or late-night activity. No amplified music shall be audible to neighboring residents. Nine. Common walls between residential and non-residential uses shall be constructed to minimize the transmission of noise and vibration. D. Lighting. A lighting plan allowing existing and proposed exterior lighting, including building and ground lighting, locations, supports, mounting heights, and orientation of all luminaires and light distribution pattern is required. Two. Parking areas and pedestrian facilities shall be illuminated to provide appropriate visibility and security during hours of darkness. Three. Exterior lighting shall be architecturally integrated with the building style, material, and colors. Four. Exterior lighting of the building and site shall be designed so that light is not directed off the site, including above the site, and the light source is shielded from direct off-site viewing. Five. Ficture mounting height should be appropriate for the project and the setting. Use of low bollard-type fixtures, three to four feet in height, is encouraged as pedestrian area light. The mounting height of fixtures in smaller parking lots or service areas should not exceed sixteen feet, with lower mounting heights encouraged particularly where adjacent to residential areas. Six. Raised light pole bases shall be attractively designed and well detailed to be compatible with the overall project. Seven. The use of vandal-resistant well lighting is encouraged for lighting monument signs. E. Residential use restriction. One. Residential to be constructed or rehabilitated shall be designed to filter out noise and vibration through construction employing, but not limited to, such techniques as applying soundproofing material between dwelling units laterally and vertically and between different uses employing staggered joists and insulation. Two. Residential density will be limited to the density of the abutting residential zone districts when within fifty feet. When two or more districts abut the AO fold project, the highest allowable density shall prevail. Three. Residential uses, apartment and condominium units, shall be permitted in existing structures and shall consist of not less than five hundred square feet of livable space. F. Buffers, density, and height. One. Where an AO fold property abuts a residential zone property, a buffer strip of seventy-five feet shall be required for any new non-residential development. Such buffers shall be planted with year-round screening vegetation adequate to buffer the view from the residential zone. Preservation of existing trees and vegetation is preferred where they provide desired screening. Two. Where the AO fold abuts a residentially zoned property, a buffer strip of twenty-five feet shall be required for any new residential development. Three. To reduce the bulk and area of buildings and pavement relative to the overall size of the development and to provide landscape areas for visual and sound buffers, increased groundwater recharge, and reduced stormwater runoff, the total area of any AO fold that may be covered by buildings and paved surfaces shall not exceed fifty percent. The board may allow by special permit an increase to a maximum of sixty percent impervious coverage when the board finds that one or more of the following benefits of the development outweigh the impacts of the increased impervious coverage. A. The use of grass slash pavement block systems or similar treatment reduces stormwater runoff and/or. B. Development achieves an overall benefit to the community such as elimination of blight conditions, preservation of historic structures, closure of excessive curb cuts, provisions of interparcial access or service roads, or similar benefits. Four. Maximum building heights for new construction shall be as follows. A. Residential, thirty-five feet, may be higher upon approval by the fire chief and the planning board. B. Commercial, sixty feet. C. Industrial, sixty feet. D. Mixed use, sixty feet. Five. For existing structures. A. Telecommunication facilities, water tanks, solar collection systems, similar structures and necessary mechanical appurtenances may be erected on an existing structure to a higher, greater than the limit established for the AO fold, provided that no such exception shall cover at any level more than twenty-five percent of the area of the roof on which it is located, except for a solar collection system which may cover more than twenty-five percent of the area of the roof on which it is located. If the architectural design and layout is compatible with that of the structure to which it is affixed and generally in keeping with the character of the neighborhood in which it is to be situated, and provided further that no such exception shall be used for residential, commercial, or industrial purposes other than such as may be incidental to the permitted use of the main structure. B. Roof structures and/or roof lines may be integrated together where more than one roof line or roof style is present. Six. The height limitations of these bylaws for new construction shall not apply to chimneys, cables, copulas, spires, water towers, flagpole, transmission towers, and cables, radio or television, tenny or towers, or telecommunications service facilities, provided that the telecommunications facility and its antennas or associated equipment does not extend more than five feet above the highest point of the building or structure to which it is attached. G. Outdoor storage and sales display. One. Except as specified below, outdoor storage or display of goods shall be enclosed within permanent walls or fences integrated into the design of the building. A. Storage or display racks and goods thereon shall not exceed the height of screening walls or fences. B. Goods shall not be displayed in landscaped areas on external walls or in parking lots. C. The board, at its sole discretion, may permit the outdoor display and sale of merchandise on sidewalks if a written request accompanies the application stating the nature of the outdoor sales, including the location, duration, and types of merchandise to be sold. D. Outdoor display areas shall be delineated on a site plan and/or concept plan and shall not impede the normal use of sidewalks or other pedestrian walkways. E. No vending machines shall be allowed outside of any buildings. F. All materials, supplies, and equipment shall be stored in accordance with fire prevention standards of the National Board of Fire Underwriters and shall be screened from view from public ways and abutting properties. H. Waste disposal. One. Garbage or recycling dumpsters slash compacters shall have doors or lids that shall remain closed when not being loaded or unloaded and shall be contained in masonry enclosures supplemented with landscaping if necessary. Two. No delivery, loading, trash removal, compaction, or other similar operations shall be permitted between the hours of eight PM and six AM, unless the applicant submits evidence that sound barriers between all areas for such operations effectively reduce noise emissions. Five. Signs. One. Signs shall conform to section eight point nine for each use on the site and, in addition to those requirements, the following. A. All signs shall be architecturally integrated with their surroundings in terms of size, shape, color, texture, and lighting so that they are complementary to the overall design of the building and are not in visual competition with other signs in the area. B. Signs shall be proportionate to the dimensions of their location. C. All signs shall complement their surroundings without competing with each other, shall convey their message clearly and legibly, shall be vandal-proof and weather-resistant, and if illuminated, shall not be overly bright for their surroundings. All signs, save for wayfinding signs, must be externally lit. D. Exterior lighting of the building and site shall be designed so that light is not directed off the site and a light source is shielded from direct off-site viewing. E. New signs proposed for existing buildings shall provide a compatible appearance with the building signage of other tenants. With multiple signs on a single building, attempt to bring in a unifying element such as size, even where no sign program exists. F. New construction design shall anticipate signage and where necessary a sign program. New building design should provide logical sign areas following flexibility for new uses, users, as the building is re-tenanted over time. Designs which provide for convenient and attractive replacement of signs are encouraged. G. The use of roof signs shall be prohibited. H. Freestanding signs shall not be greater than five feet in height. Monument sign materials shall reflect the character of the use and the building the sign identifies. I. Freestanding sign bases shall be made of permanent durable materials such as concrete or brick. Bases made of texture-coated sheet metal are discouraged. J. Landscaping and irrigation shall be designed around the base of freestanding signs to integrate the sign with the ground plane and screen out any low-level floodlights. Irrigation shall be designed so it does not damage the sign. K. Freestanding signs on poles which have a top-heavy appearance are discouraged. L. Driveway directional signs shall only be used for projects where circulation is complex and the traffic must proceed through the site along a specific path for service. Where the layout of the parking lot and driveways are obvious and clearly apparent to the driver entering from the street, directional signage is not appropriate. When not appropriate or needed, such signage can visually clutter the site and will be discouraged. M. Any external spot or floodlighting shall be arranged so that the light source is screened from direct view by passersby and so that the light is directed against the sign and does not shine into adjacent property or blind motorists and pedestrians. J. Landscaping requirements. One. Existing trees shall be maintained as practicable, and any new trees shall be carefully selected and located where they will complement the building elevation and shall not block all retail storefront signage from view. Two. Screening of mechanical equipment, trash, and loading areas shall be provided through the use of walls, fences, and/or dense evergreen plant materials. Three. Landscaping and screening plant materials should not encroach on the public walkways or roadways in a way that impedes pedestrian or vehicular traffic. Four. Shrubs or trees that die shall be replaced within one growing season. Five. All new plant materials shall be sized so that the landscaping has an attractive appearance at the time of installation and a mature appearance within three years of planting. Six. All proposed shrubs, except accent, color, or ground cover planting, shall be a minimum of five-gallon size. Shrubs and ground cover plants shall be spaced close enough together to ensure an attractive and mature planting effect. Seven. Energy conservation within structures shall be addressed by recognizing the sun exposure on the site and providing or maintaining appropriate tree species. Dissidious trees on the southern exposure, coniferous and broadleaf evergreen trees along the eastern and western exposure, and evergreens along the northern exposure. Eight. Tree species, when additional trees are proposed, should be selected with root growth habits that will not cause damage to sidewalks, or such tree species shall be sited away from such landscaped areas. Nine. Landscaping plans shall show all obstructions such as streetlight, meters, backflow devices, utility covers, transformers, and similar objects which may affect plant placement and installation limitations. Ten. When constructing new landscape planting areas on surfaces which were previously covered by pavement or structure, all existing asphalt, base rock, or other deleterious materials shall be removed to the depth of the native soil, and clean soil shall be used to backfill the planting area. Eleven. All exposed dirt areas shall be covered with bark or mulch or other weed-controlled measures, including as part of final landscape. Twelve. Street tree placement shall include consideration for vehicle line of sight, entrance and exit curb cuts, street light and traffic control devices, and other site-specific conditions as part of design review process. Thirteen. First-year plantings must be watered weekly throughout the growing season. K. Parking and loading areas. One. Parking shall conform to section seven point one and additionally shall meet the following standards. A. Parking lots shall provide well-defined routes for vehicles, delivery trucks, and pedestrians. B. Loading areas visible for public street or adjacent property shall be screened with masonry walls supplemented by landscaping if necessary. C. To the maximum extent feasible, landscaped islands with raised curves shall be used to define parking lot entrances. The ends of parking aisles and the location and pattern of primary driveways and pedestrian walkways. D. Parking areas shall be screened from adjacent residential uses, streets, and walkways using trees and shrubs adapted to the region of specimen quality conforming to the American Standard for Nursery Stock, American Standards Institute Incorporated, two thirty, Southern Building, Washington DC, two zero 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 five, and shall be planted according to accepted horticultural standards. Berms may be used for screening along the street in conjunction with plant materials. E. Where a mix of uses creates staggered peak periods of parking demand, shared parking calculations shall be submitted to reduce total required parking. A reserve area for future development shall be provided on the site plan. F. The use of porous pavement and/or perforated brick or block shall be used to the extent feasible to increase onsite water retention for plant material, groundwater supplies, and to reduce problems associated with runoff. G. Within the town's right-of-way, all curbing shall be constructed of granite. L. Medical and/or biological research. One. In the establishment, operation, and design of medical and biological research, laboratories, and facilities with standards and procedures as amended of the National Institute of Health, Bethesda, Maryland, and Centers for Disease Control will apply. No facility shall contain or conduct research involving biological safety level three or the equivalent term risk group three, classification or higher. Section nine point three point six, applications and permit procedures. A. Before an application is made, it is suggested that the applicant become familiar with the bylaws contained in this section, as well as those contained in section two point five, which addresses special permits, and section two point six, which addresses site plan, and consult with the planning board and/or planning office for other bylaws to consider and for any clarifications. B. There are two application procedures for development in the AO fold. One. A concept plan application for the entire AO fold property without a special permit application for specific land uses to be reviewed by the development review team and presented to the planning board for review and comments. And, two, a special permit application for each proposed use within the AO fold. C. Concept planned application. One. Purpose. The concept plan is intended to illustrate the general development plan and expected land uses without requiring the detail and expense of a site plan required as a part of special permit submittal. Two. Exemptions. A. The concept plan is not required when the site plan submitted with a special permit application includes all proposed uses and development in the entire AO fold. B. The concept plan is not required when the proposed development is restricted to an existing structure and development directly related to such structure, parking, landscaping, signs, et cetera. Three. Procedure. The following procedure shall apply when an applicant seeks approval only of a concept plan. A. Application. The applicant shall file with the board an application for concept plan approval on such form as provided by the board, and such application shall be governed by the requirement, section seven point two. B. Elements of concept plan. The concept plan shall be prepared by an engineer, architect, or landscape architect, and shall include, one, drawings at a scale of one inch equals one hundred feet. Two. Existing topography with two-foot contours to show the general gradient of the site, existing structures, existing roads, and rights-of-way, major topographic features including wooded and open areas, ledge or outcroppings, inland wetlands, watercourses, and floodplain. Three. The land uses and zoning within three hundred feet of the site. Four. Boundary description of the district within it. Five. Names of all abutting property owners. Six. The location of all proposed roadways, parking areas, setbacks, easements, land use areas, open space areas, and access locations from connecting roads and driveways within the site to the existing public road system. Seven. The site shall be divided into general land use areas identified as one or more of the specially permitted uses, e.g., retail, restaurant, office, research lab, et cetera. Eight. Proposed building footprints and location of parking area. Nine. Letters from the water department and the Water Pollution Control Authority stating our service is to be provided to the proposed land uses. Ten. A preliminary traffic analysis prepared by a professional engineer, which shall include but not be limited to the following. A. Land use, site and study area boundaries. B. Existing and proposed site use. C. Existing and proposed roadways and intersections. D. Existing and proposed roadways in intersection capacities and volumes. E. Trip generation and design hour volumes. F. Trip distribution. G. Trip assignments. H. Existing and projected traffic volumes. I. Levels of service of all affected intersections for the design hour. J. Future traffic impact analysis. One. Short-term horizon, one year after occupancy. Two. Long-term horizon, twenty years after occupancy. Eleven. A preliminary stormwater discharge plan prepared by a professional engineer, which shall include as a minimum the following. A. A map showing project location, description of the property, acreage, topography, identification of major drainage ways involved, proposed type of development, identification of wetlands based on soils map, and a reference to any flood hazard area delineation study applicable to the site. B. A map of the tributary drainage basin determining the location and magnitude of flows from upstream of the site based on current development or zoning, whichever provides the highest runoff volumes. C. A conceptual drainage plan showing how intercepted and onsite flows will be received and transported. D. Designated points of discharge from the site accompanied by a general analysis of how existing downstream facilities will handle this discharge. E. Proposed rights-of-way required for drainage easements and detention areas. F. Stormwater storage volume required. G. Location of storage areas. Twelve. Narrative and illustrative elevations of design elements explaining how various design elements, landscaping, architecture, signage, street design, et cetera, contribute to a unified appearance that is harmonious both internally and with surrounding properties in terms of scale, materials, and contribute to a unified appearance that is harmonious both internally and with surrounding properties in terms of scale, materials, and color. Thirteen, a table indicating the following. A, areas of the site for each proposed land use. B, the amount of building floor area proposed for each land use. C, number of parking and loading spaces for each land use. D, wetland areas, floodplains, areas, area of ledge or outcroppings. E, overall lot coverage. F, and building heights. Fourteen, limits of phases where development is proposed in phases. Fifteen, such other relevant information as the applicant may wish to submit or the board may request. Four, required findings, in approving a concept plan, the board shall find, A, the application and concept plan are complete. B, that the proposed location of the land use areas on the site avoids placement of incompatible uses adjacent to one another. C, that the transition between the different proposed uses is suitable and that adequate buffering is provided. D, that the proposed land uses and development patterns satisfy the purpose and intent of the regulation as set forth in section one and the standards and requirements of sections five through six. Five, changes to concept plan. Changes to an approved concept plan are required to be approved by the planning board. D, AOFO special permit application. One, a special permit application in conformance with section two point five, which includes submission of a site plan as outlined in section two point six, is required for each proposed use. The special permit application is also subject to the following requirement. A, concept plan, a concept plan must be submitted with the special permit applications for a proposed use or uses if not previously submitted. The board shall act on the concept plan prior to acting on a special permit application. B, traffic report. Report prepared by professional traffic engineers stating that traffic conditions as described in the approved concept plan traffic report have not changed or if they have, in what way. C, a tabular statement of zoning conformance with respect to each land use type contained on the concept plan. D, in addition to the criteria for special permit approval, the requirements and findings of this section must be met. Two, changes to special permit site plan. Changes to an approved special permit site plan are to be approved by the board. Three, change in uses within existing structures is also permitted for situations where a use has already been approved in accordance with these bylaws upon review and approval by the planning board. When such use does not change the compatibility of such new use with those existing within the structure and the change in use does not result in expansion of space greater than twenty-five percent or five thousand square feet, whichever is greater. A, the development review team will review and will forward any such requests to the board for approval. B, the development review team may require such information as it deems appropriate to evaluate any such application, including those listed in subsection C of this section. C, the town planner shall make a report of any decisions made under this section to the board at the next regular meeting of the board following such decisions.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Pear, how are you? So, welcome to the plan, from the plan. So, uh, I know Counselor Steve's had a couple of amendments and what I'm gonna do is share his email, or some of his, um, if I pick the right one here. Hold on. Oops, I don't want to do that. Hold on one second, sorry. Hold on. All right, uh, hopefully people can see that. Counselor Steve, can you see that?
I've got this copy on my screen anyway, so it doesn't matter.
Okay, so just so people can see. So, you had a couple of proposed amendments to the AO.
I do.
Text overlay district bylaw, so go ahead.
A couple, okay, if I may, um, a couple of them are just kind of clarifications. Under section nine point three point five, C five, um, the uranium two thirty S, uh, two three S should be to uranium two thirty. Under section nine point three point five, C seven, we don't have a code of ordinances, it should be code bylaws. I, while, while, uh, the reading was going through just a moment ago, another thing jumped out that I forgot to put in here, which is, under section nine point three point five, J one, I'd like to see in addition saying, quote, "All new trees and other plantings shall be native to New England." And, under section nine point three point six, C four, I thought, and I mentioned this at the, at the original hearing, where it says the board shall find, so forth and so forth. I thought that that was an odd phrasing because I, I, I could read that as saying that it requires approval. Um, and I mentioned that at the time, and that I, that didn't, phrasing didn't sit well with me. So I was thinking it should read, "In deciding on whether to co- to approve a concept plan, the board shall determine the following in writing citing relevant evidence." And that's what I think the intent is. As opposed to saying, as opposed to tying the board's hand and saying they shall do, they shall say that this is what's happening. And the same things I have for the, the, uh, the next one, but for this one for now.
For this one. So, I, I guess in the, in terms of amendments, um, that's off this amendment. Are we in agreement, uh, planning board, which could, could that have been uranium two, two thirty-five?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And nine point three point five, chapter seven, it is a code of bylaw, so we're all set with that one, correct? You'll make that change? Um, all right, so the other one was, he's native to New England?
Yeah, that's nine point three point five, J one. Or somewhere in that section. Cause it's all about, it's that particular section is about plantings. I'm not sure exactly if it knows needs to go in that particular item, but somewhere in that section.
So it's nine point five?
Nine point three point five, J one.
I could go along with New England plantings.
Okay. We have, we have three in agreement. Um, do I have a second on those amendments, just for purposes of discussion? All right, so. And then I, it was the last one, I guess, then. Go ahead, Larry.
Um, I'm not in agreement with the north, New England species. So if you, if somebody wants to plant a Korean dogwood, they can't do it because it's not a New England species?
Uh, to be honest with you, Larry, that's one of the things that I think we need to be trying to do as much as we can to focus on species that we know do well in our ecosystem. And, yes, there is some overlap between northeastern Asia.
Plans for the last hundred years.
Uh, that's part of the problem, we've got a zillion of landscape plants out there that don't belong here. That's part of the problem. That's why we have things like, um, like Oriental Bittersweet all over the place. It's because it was used at one point for decoration and it's become invasive. Now, I'm not saying that that particular species you cited is necessarily invasive and not all of them are. Some of them do become naturalized and deal with our system just fine. Some of them become seriously invasive and become a huge problem. And I would like to see that these plants be native to our ecosystem specifically to, in New England because, hey, we're in New England, really, and we, I think it's, it's, we need to be creating our, our developments to suit our ec- our ecological, ecological system rather than trying to force them to be, force our, our ecology to be something else that it's not. And a lot of this, a lot of these species that are decorative from other parts of the world have analogues in, in New England anyway.
There's a huge list of, of plants that are now considered invasive that you can't plant anyway, so.
I agree.
Why, why do we have to put down, why do we have to restrict landscape planting just because we want to say it's purely native to New England? I mean, we're gonna miss out on a lot of.
Go ahead, Larry, continue. Don't interrupt him, please, let him continue, go ahead, Larry.
I just think we're being restrictive out of foolishness. I, I, I.
Okay.
Uh, Counselor Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair Truul, I agree with, uh, uh, Mr. Spinelli regarding put restricted what kind of, you know, thing we need to plant, or I think we should leave it open for future disgust or planning board approval and all that. I think we should leave it open, not restricted anything, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I mean, I have no problem with the, with the first three because they're, they're more or less, uh, cleaning up language.
Of typos or incorrect descriptions, but.
I, I, I mean, I, I get your point, Counselor Steve, but I don't want to be overly restricted to, to the point. There might be species out there that aren't native, but they could be, uh, entered here. I, I think we're just, uh, yeah, overthinking that. Counselor Lazo?
I, uh, I don't think we should be more restrictive. If anything, I'm, I'm more in favor of being less restrictive. I agree with, uh, Planning Board member Spinelli, um, with this one here. I mean, I understand there's gonna be some amendments, but this one here, I, I think we need to leave it open so it has more flexibility to it.
Yeah. Hey, any other? So. How do you want to proceed with fixing, go ahead, Mr. Spinelli.
Uh, I, I just want to do, when we had our public here and Counselor Steve's came forward and he brought some of these suggestions forward. And we listed, we wrote them all out and we gathered them all up and then we took a look at it and we said, okay, some of these are purely fine, they're logical, it's just typos or whatever. But for anything else, I mean, if you're gonna, if you're automatically gonna restrict them before they come in, that's the purview and the job of the planning board. And, to me, you're kind of saying, well, you know, maybe the planning board doesn't know what it's doing and I'll take exception to that after thirty-eight years of being on the board and a year and a half serving as a town counselor. I think I understand what's good for the town of Southridge. And I, I don't want to be restrictive, I don't want to tell people they can't do this or they can't do that. Let's take a look at it. For example, you have trees that are being planted right now that the planning board just approved for sixty-seven Central Street, the new dispensary, adult use marijuana dispensary. Now, two out of those three trees that we approved are not indigenous to New England, but they're beautiful trees. They tolerate well, they're grown and developed in the same zone as we are. Why would we put, why would we put a restriction on something because we want to say, well, it's only New England? Uh, I just, I don't see the logic in that at all, I'm, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Spinelli. You were to be recognized, thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Steve.
Um, I was thinking, first of all, I want to make it clear that I am not trying to insult the planning board's capacities by, by any means. But it is also within our capacities as town council to, to create the final bylaws. Um, we are the elected ones. Um, and that under the circumstances where this particular situation is, um, I, I think it's probably no secret to anybody that I've always had a strong ecological bent anyway. I think I've seen it, you've seen it repeatedly. Um, and in this case, I think that's, it's a circumstance where, um, we have allowed development in many respects and that kind of ties into some of the other things that I'll, I'll be proposing later. I'm not necessarily to this particular bylaw. Um, where we have been allowing development to kind of run roughshod over our ecology to the long-term detriment of our community. Um, where what you were saying, Larry, is correct, that there are certainly species out there that have proven to be, um, pretty compatible with our own ecosystem. And that's, and I honestly, I don't have a huge issue with that. Maybe we can phrase it in such a way, be native to New England or from a compatible ecosystem. And, and, uh, very, I, the list of the great ones that you cited. Cause I know there is a long list of them. Unfortunately, some of them are still being sold, they're still being planted. Um, hopefully, obviously, I would hope that you guys wouldn't approve th- those things, but I know that they are available in some places and they shouldn't be, but they're not, they're not very well policed. And I think that if we have a, a bylaw where, if we're gonna be doing bylaws for our community, I think we should be, as I said kind of earlier, crafting the bylaws so that they take into account the larger community, which isn't just the human community. Cause we have thousands of other creatures in this town that are residing here that have no sense. And we are constantly building on blood life of the rest of our community that we rely on. That's really where my viewpoint comes from.
Thanks, Counselor.
Taking into account all the other species that we live for.
Thank you, Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, T U actually, I just, I, I guess it's a question of how we want to move forward on this. It sounds like there's agreement on a couple of these already among council, because they're simple corrections. Should we take both those and then separate this one out to vote separately? Or should we go through each one since there's disagreement about one of them and vote on each individual one?
I'm gonna defer to my parliamentarian, Counselor Lazo.
Each, each amendment has to be voted individually. You can't hold the blanket together.
Right.
Okay.
All right, so let's go through, um, the first amendment to change from section nine point three point five, chapter five, uranium twenty-three S to uranium twen- two thirty-five. Do I have a motion?
I'm over.
Second.
Okay.
So a motion is second. Any discussion on that amendment? We'll call and accept in that amendment.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yeah.
Counselor Catrona?
Yes.
Counselor Joe Van?
Yes.
Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
And Counselor Steve's?
Yes.
To section nine point three point five, chapter seven, code of ordinance to read code of bylaws, do I have a motion?
So.
Motion is second, any discussion on him, on that amendment? None, we'll call on the amendment.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Counselor Catrona?
Yes.
Counselor Joe Van?
Yes.
Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Counselor Steve's?
Yes.
And Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Then, the amendment to section nine point three point six, chapter four, the beginning which, to read, "In deciding on whether to approve a concept plan, the board shall determine the following right in saying relevant evidence." Is there a motion on that? Still moved? All right, to the planning board, your thoughts on that amendment, because I'd like to hear from you on that amendment.
I like the wording that Gus put on that one.
Okay. Excellent.
Yeah. So there's no opposition to that from the planning board's perspective or comments on that?
Any kind with it, Larry?
Yep. Any other counselors? So none, roll call.
Counselor Dow?
Yeah.
Counselor Catrona?
Yes.
Counselor Joe Van?
Yes.
Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Counselor Steve's?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
And Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
And that motion carries it. Now, the other one was nine point three.
A five. Yeah, it's point five, J one. And I'll, I'll, I'll rephrase it. Um, what I'd like to see added is the following. "All new trees and other plantings shall be native to New England or a compatible ecosystem and shall not be included on the state's list of prohibited plants."
There's a second on that? Is there a second?
Okay.
There's a second discussion on that? We've heard from the planning board, Counselor Lazo?
Does that change of phrasing help, help you, help you either Dave or Larry?
Well, you're talking about landscaping requirements, right, J one?
Yep.
And so J ones, you've changed all of number one then, because it says, "Existing trees shall be maintained as practical, as practicable and any new trees shall be carefully selected and located where there will be complement the building elevation and shall not block all retail." Well, that's what you said. Nine point three point five.
Counselor Steve, Counselor Steve, can you let Mr. Spinelli speak? Sorry, we haven't had him doing that. Let one person speak and now we recognize you. Counselor, uh, go ahead, Mr. Spinelli.
Well, I mean, maybe I misunderstood him. I thought you said that the next change proposed was nine point three point five J one.
Yep.
And I just read J one. And so what the counselor is proposing is not what's written here at all.
Right. Okay, so.
Unless he's quoting something different, I don't know.
Are you, would you like to clarify that?
Yes, thank you. Um, I didn't mean to, I didn't mean to replace. I meant to add a sentence to the end of it. I'm sorry about that. I didn't say it that clearly. I meant to add that to the end of J one.
Okay.
Did you read it again?
Uh, the the additional sentence would be all new trees and other planting shall be native to New England or a compatible ecosystem and shall not be included in the state's list of prohibited plants. Which I happen to know is on mass.gov somewhere, but they're not a user friendly website, so.
All right, thank you. Counsel Lazo first.
Again, um, I'm I'm in favor of letting the planning board decide. Although, yes, I agree, we do the the bylaws. I've seen the planning board in action on some of these uh marijuana dispensaries and various other decisions, and I think there is a a a almost a a line of respect from me over the years to the planning board and various other boards and commissions not to restrict, to allow the open thought process down at that level and to let the planning board knock the steel, the tin, so to speak, to get it where it fits into South. I I really have a hard time with with regulating everything and regulate, let let just constantly regulate and then punish, punish, punish. It's been the mentality the last seven, eight years where we want to put a regulation in, another regulation, and then we have to put punishment in. Where I think the open thought process, where people can come to a planning board and request and the planning board can can deal with it at that level, I say leave more leeway for the thought process and not restrict it into the funnel. It's it's, there's a lot, I mean, I respect everybody's opinion. I just don't agree with it. And there are going to be other bylaws coming up. When it comes down to our environment and development, there has to be a balance. The far right and the far left is not where reality is. It's in the middle, where people can live in harmony together and agree to disagree, but define the common ground. That's why we have a planning board, and that's where I thought the concept, it's their ball and their court. And the last thing I want to do as a counselor is restrict them. When I saw their actions and some of these developments, they were absolutely impressive. Thank you.
Counselor Katrona?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you quickly, I think Counselor Lazo just said it best, said a lot of what I was going to say. Leave it to the planning board. Uh, we, they're there. We trust them and be less restrictive. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Dow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Uh, Counselor Steve, I I get your uh your idea, but I don't think the planning board is gonna approve a tree from Florida. I mean, they're gonna make sure that tree live in uh New England, live in the cold weather. And uh it's a lot of different tree out there, uh, you know, from different uh state, different area living in cold weather. So I I think, you know, we should leave it open and then subject to a planning board review and approval, but not restricted what kind of tree. Uh, I'm sure anybody's gonna design a plan, is gonna bring it forward. Uh, that he is gonna live in here and the planning board is gonna review and search before they approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Steve?
Um, I think to Counselor Dow is that, that's exactly my point, and that, and all this does is simply states that that, that that's the objective. Is to make sure, I'm not trying, I'm not trying to, I don't think that this puts any particular restricted control on the planning board's decision making pro- powers, but I think what it does is that it shows some respect for our ecosystem, and I think that it just simply states in a sentence what you just stated, that that's what we're trying to do and that and that's all I'm trying to do. It doesn't, and to to go at Counsel Lazo was just saying a while ago, um, I think that in many respects, what we are seeing is a situation where we have allowed development to get way out of bounds. And that we need to start ti- start trying to figure out a better way to work with nature that is here rather than trying to force it to do what we want it to do. Because we're, we're not the only beings on this planet. And that's a big part of the problems that we have had for a very long time. And I can go into a lot more detail when we get to the, when we get to the uh, the third bylaw that comes up later, because this these two, these these particular proposals for um amendments are, will also apply to the GV fold bylaws. So we're kind of debating both, we're dividing, debating these changes now, but it applies to them too. So. I guess that's all I have at the moment.
Thank you. Counselor Marquetti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't see anything wrong with uh Gus Steve's, uh, Counsel Steve's proposal and uh as far as doing away with regulations, uh, we see what, we see what happened in Texas and they did away with regulations, problems that they're having down there. So I think we should just move it along here. If the counselors want to vote the way they want to vote, then that's fine. Let's let's just move it on, please. Thank you.
Mr. Spinelli? Do you have anything else?
I I was just gonna say, you know, sometimes you need to, when you create a bylaw and you're trying to do something that's going to be universally applicable, what you're trying to do is to say, okay, the planning board is the sole functionary for this, because the split planning, anything that you want to do with the AO fold or the the next one that comes up is ninety nine percent of the time is by special permit. And to me, the special permit says, okay, planning board, this is your jurisdiction, you're responsible. It's an open meeting. Many times we've had town counselors come down, voice their opinion on something. We've listened to it respectfully. We try to adhere to it if it's within what we feel is proper for the town. You know, there's a I'm not taking this personally. I just feel that what we created with this overlay district is a pretty good document. It didn't just happen overnight and there was good thought put into it. And I just don't want to see us so nitpicky it down from one point of view that it becomes non-functional. And that's what I'm really concerned about. I want this document, other than corrections for typos or something, I really want this document to go forward as it is. The next one to go forward as it is and try. And then if we find that there's something wrong and somebody comes in, then the board makes the applicable changes and goes back to the town council and says, okay, this was not such a good section right here. The wording wasn't good. We'll ask you to change it, which we've not been afraid to do. I just I just think that there's a lot of thought gone into this. I would like to see it enacted as it is.
Thank you. Counselor Steve's?
Uh, and I totally agree that there's been a lot of thought put into it. I completely agree with you. I've seen, I've seen some of the, I mean, you guys have put years of thought into some of these things, and I totally respect that. And I know you've got a lot of experience, you and Dave and the rest of you who work. Um, and I have absolutely no problem with that. Um, this, these are just uh, from the, from the whole length of the bylaws, these are all relatively minor tweaks. That's all they are. They're not, they're not going to hugely um alter the general meaning of the bylaws. That's all they, that's all they are.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the amendment? Okay, roll call on the amendment.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Thank you. Uh, so we're gonna vote the way it is, correct? No change?
Well, no, Counselor Steve's has an amendment that he wants to add that language. So a yes vote would add the sentence that he has, a no vote would not add that sentence.
Oh, thank you.
So it would uh, a yes vote would change uh um adding the, those restrictions on the trees. So, everybody clear? Okay, roll call on the amendment on that one, section nine one three five J one.
Counselor Katrona?
No.
Counselor Jovan?
No.
Counselor Lazo?
No.
Counselor Marquetti?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Counselor Steve's?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
No.
Counselor Daniel?
No.
And Counselor Dow?
No. That that amendment is not, uh, sorry. Any other discussion on the reading? And and none? Motion vote to amend the Southbridge Zone and Bylaw by adding section nine point three American Optical Flex Overlay Zone. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any further discussion on that? See, none roll call?
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Counselor Steve's?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
And Counselor Katrona?
Yes.
Okay, that one is a top two. Amendments to the Southbridge Zone. The amendments to Southbridge Zone Bylaw introduced in, in section nine point four Globe Village Flex Overlay Zone. First reading, January twenty first, two thousand twenty one. Second reading, February eighth, two thousand twenty one. Third reading, tonight, February twenty second, two thousand twenty one. Um, we do have the amendments proposed by Counselor Steve, but we'll do the reading. Counselor Marquetti?
Okay, do I still have uh sharing rights?
Come here to Jack. You're all set now. I had uh my computer kind of rebooted during Counsel Lazo's talk, so. Uh, you're.
Okay. Just to be clear, I didn't, it's it's the same wording as the last one, so if there's any changes, it'll be the same ones. All right? Thank you. Section nine point four Globe Village Flex Overlay District, section nine point four point one, intent A. The intent of the Globe Village Flex Overlay District, here and after referred to as GV fold, is to provide the opportunity to fully utilize former mill structures and related properties that are part of the town's landscape, character, and history. They are also places of economic activity and economic opportunity. Specifically, this bylaw is intended to, one, provide maximum flexibility for the development and enhancement of GV fold properties. Two, retain the potential for business and industrial development while permitting residential development. Three, foster a greater opportunity for creative development, which encourage a mix of uses, residential, commercial, and industrial. Four, enhance business vitality and provide employment opportunities. Five, enhance and protect the town tax revenues and six, encourage the development of flexible space for small and emerging businesses. Section nine point four point two, general requirements. A, all uses shall be served by public water and sewer. The requirement for public water may be waived in whole or in part by the board if the applicant can establish to the satisfaction of the planning board that portable water requirements can be realized through onsite system. A request for a waiver shall be submitted in writing by the applicant at the time application is made. The request shall detail the extent of the waiver requested and contains sufficient data for the board to make the findings required above. The applicant shall submit a written report on the adequacy of the proposed alternative water supply system of each proposed building lot and or use prepared by a professional engineer licensed to practice in the state of Massachusetts, certifying either that each lot and or for use is separate private water supply systems constructed in accordance with the standards of the state of Massachusetts or specifying the location or conditions under which such systems would meet such standards. Approval by the board of health is necessary prior to approval of any waiver. B, all developments shall be reviewed for compatibility with the Southbridge Master Plan and be supportive of the public health, general welfare, and safety of the community, including adequate provisions of public facilities and a minimum number of access points on existing roads. C, the board may, at its discretion, hire a third party consultant, also acceptable to the applicant, to aid the board in its review of any proposed use or site. The fees charged by the third party consultant shall be borne by the applicant. D, uses currently allowed by special permit may continue. Uses allowed by right in the underlying zone may be developed by the securing of a site plan review through the planning board. Any changes to a special permit use will require a new special permit complying with these bylaws. Section nine point four point three allowable uses by special permit. A, all commercial and residential uses not prohibited under section nine point four point four, subject to the performance and compatibility standards in section nine point four point five of this section and the application and permitting requirements of subsection nine point four point six are permitted by special permit. B, within the GV fold, there should be no restriction on combining different categories of use, provided such uses conform with the compatibility and performance standards found in section nine point four point five within the same building, except any imposed by the state building code or other federal, state, or local bylaws. C, an erosion and sedimentation control plan shall be required when the proposed development will result in a disturbed area that is cumulatively more than one half acre in size, or when the board determines that special site conditions warrant such a plan. Section nine point four point four prohibited uses. A, adult entertainment uses. B, animal sales on properties of less than five acres. C, animal agriculture on properties of less than five acres. D, automobile or truck sales. E, camps, day slash boarding. F, cemeteries. G, collection centers. H, dog kennels. I, drive up services associated with any commercial use other than bank. J, golf courses. K, letting of room. L, rooming and or boarding house excluding dormitories for educational uses. M, seasonal camping slash tents. Section nine point four point five, performance and compatibility standards. A, compatibility. One, all new uses shall demonstrate to the satisfaction of the board that any such new uses, in addition to meeting the requirements of this section, are compatible with all existing uses. A, any new buildings or accessory structures shall relate harmoniously to each other with adequate light, air circulation, separation between buildings, and to the extent practicable, shall be in harmony with the existing district. B, building or structures that are listed on the National Register of Historic Places shall be converted, constructed, reconstructed, restored, or altered to maintain or promote the status of a building or structure on the state or national register of historic places. B, access and traffic impacts. One, traffic and safety impacts to the existing and proposed roads shall be minimized. Two, access shall be provided to the extent feasible through an existing street or driveway. Curb cuts shall be limited. Three, pedestrian and vehicular traffic shall be separated. Four, walkways shall be provided for access to adjacent properties and between businesses. C, nuisance avoidance. One, uses shall cause no inherent and recurring generated vibration perceptible without instruments at any point between two or more uses or along a property line. Temporary construction is excluded from this restriction. Two, smoke shall not be visible beyond a shade or darker than number one on the Ringelman Smoke Chart. Three, heat and glare generated from within a structure or use shall not be discernible from the outside of any structure. Four, odor, dust, and fumes shall be effectively combined to the premises or so disposed as to avoid air pollution. Five, no activities involving bulk storage or manufacture of materials or products that could decompose by detonation shall be permitted. These materials include primary explosives such as lead, azide, fulminates, lead, staphinate, and tetracin. High explosives such as TNT, RDX, HMX, PETN, and pyric acid, propellants and their components such as dry nitrocellulose, black powder, boron hydrides, and hydrazine and its derivatives. Pyrotechnics and fireworks such as magnesium powder, potassium chlorate, potassium nitrate, blasting explosives such as dynamites and nitroglycerin. Unstable organic compounds such as acetylates, tetrazoles, and ozonides. Strong oxidizing agents such as liquid oxygen, perchloric acid, perchlorates, chlorates, and hydrogen peroxide in concentrations greater than thirty five percent, and nuclear fuels. Visionable materials and products and reactor elements such as uranium twenty three S and plutonium two two three nine. Utilization of the materials included in this, in this section shall be limited to the minimum quantities necessary for specific research and only after the procurement of all required local, state, and federal permits. Material type, quantity, storage, handling procedures, and location in the fa- facility shall also be registered with the fire department, police department, and the Southbridge Planning Board. All local, state, and federal disposal procedures must be followed. Six, any electrical radiation shall not adversely affect at any point any operations or any equipment, including not only professional research equipment, but also equipment reserved for personal uses such as reception of public radio transmissions, use of cellular phones, et cetera, except equipment belonging to the creator of the electrical radiation. All FCC rules and regulations must be followed. Seven, no. Seven, no use abutting residential use shall engage in or cause very loud activities as defined in the Town of Southbridge Code of Ordinances, section seven dash five oh three, between the hours of nine PM of one day and seven AM of the following day. Eight, non-residential uses shall be designed, constructed, and operated, and hours of operation limited where appropriate, so that neighboring residents are not exposed to offensive noise, especially from traffic or late-night activity. No amplified music shall be audible to neighboring residents. Nine, common walls between residential and non-residential uses shall be constructed to minimize the transmission of noise and vibration. D, lighting. A lighting plan allowing existing and proposed exterior lighting, including building and ground lighting, locations, supports, mounting heights, and orientation of all luminaires and light distribution pattern is required. Two, parking areas and pedestrian facilities shall be illuminated to provide appropriate visibility and security during hours of darkness. Three, exterior lighting shall be architecturally integrated with the building style, material, and colors. Four, exterior lighting of the building and site shall be designed so that light is not directed off the site, including above the site, and the light source is shielded from direct off-site viewing. Five, fixture mounting height should be appropriate for the project and the setting. Use of low bollard-type fixtures, three to four feet in height, is encouraged as pedestrian area lighting. The mounting height of fixtures in smaller parking lots or service areas should not exceed sixteen feet, with lower mounting heights encouraged particularly where adjacent to residential areas. Six, raised light pole bases shall be attractively designed and well detailed to be compatible with the overall project. Seven, the use of vandal-resistant well lighting is encouraged for lighting monument signs. E, residential use restriction. One, residential buildings to be constructed or rehabilitated shall be designed to filter out noise and vibration through construction employing, but not limited to, such techniques as applying soundproofing material between dwelling units laterally and vertically and between different uses employing staggered joists and insulation. Two, residential density will be limited to the density of the abutting residential zone districts when within fifty feet. When two or more districts abut a GV Fold project, the highest allowable density shall prevail. Three, residential uses, apartment and condominium units, shall be permitted in existing structures and shall consist of not less than five hundred square feet of livable space. F, buffers, density, and height. One, where GV Fold property butts a residential zone property, a buffer strip of seventy-five feet shall be required for any new non-residential development. Such buffers shall be planted with year-round screening vegetation adequate to buffer the view from the residential zone. Preservation of existing trees and vegetation is preferred where they provide desired screening. Two, to reduce the bulk and area of buildings and pavement relative to the overall size of development and to provide landscaped areas for visual and sound buffers, increased groundwater recharge, and reduced stormwater runoff, the total area of any GV Fold that may be covered by buildings and paved surfaces shall not exceed fifty percent. The board may allow by special permit an increase to a maximum of sixty percent impervious coverage when the board finds that one or more of the following benefits of the development outweigh the impacts of the increased impervious coverage. A, the use of grass slash pavement block systems or similar treatment reduces stormwater runoff and/or. B, the development achieves an overall benefit to the community such as elimination of blight conditions, preservation of historic structures, closure of excessive curb cuts, provisions of interparcel access or service roads or similar benefit. Three, maximum building heights for new construction shall be as follows. A, residential thirty-five feet may be higher upon approval by the fire chief and the planning board. B, commercial sixty feet. C, industrial sixty feet. D, mixed use sixty feet. Four, for existing structures. A, telecommunication facilities, water tanks, solar collection systems, similar structures and necessary mechanical pertinences may be erected on an existing structure to a height greater than the limit established for the GV Fold, provided that no such exception shall cover at any level more than twenty-five percent of the area of the roof on which it is located, except for a solar collection system which may cover more than twenty-five percent of the area of the roof on which it is located. If the architectural design and layout is compatible with that of the structure to which it is affixed and generally in keeping with the character of the neighborhood in which it is to be situated and provided further that no such exception shall be used for residential, commercial, or industrial uses other than such as may be incidental to the permitted use of the main structure. B, roof structures and/or roof lines may be integrated together where more than one roof line or roof style is present. Five, the height limitations of these bylaws for new construction shall not apply to chimneys, cables, copulas, spires, water towers, flagpole, transmission towers, and cables, radio or television tenny or towers or telecommunications service facilities, provided that the telecommunications facility and its antennas or associated equipment does not extend more than five feet above the highest point of the building or structure to which it is attached. G, outdoor storage and sales display. One, except as specified below, outdoor storage or display of goods shall be enclosed within permanent walls or fences integrated into the design of the building. A, storage or display racks and goods thereon shall not exceed the height of screening walls or fences. B, goods shall not be displayed in landscaped areas on external walls or in parking lots. C, the board, at its sole discretion, may permit the outdoor display and sale of merchandise on sidewalks if a written request accompanies the application stating the nature of the outdoor sales, including the location, duration, and types of merchandise to sell. D, outdoor display areas shall be delineated on a site plan and/or concept plan and shall not impede the normal use of sidewalks or other pedestrian walkways. E, no vending machines shall be allowed outside of any buildings. F, all materials, supplies, and equipment shall be stored in accordance with fire prevention standards of the National Board of Fire Underwriters and shall be screened from view from public ways and abutting properties. H, waste disposal. One, garbage or recycling dumpsters slash compacters shall have doors or lids that shall remain closed when not being loaded or unloaded and shall be contained in masonry enclosures supplemented with landscaping if necessary. Two, no delivery, loading, trash removal, compaction, or other similar operations shall be permitted between the hours of eight PM and six AM, unless the applicant submits evidence that sound barriers between all areas for such operations effectively reduce noise emissions. I, signs. One, signs shall conform to section eight point nine for each use on the site and in addition to those requirements, the following. A, all signs shall be architecturally integrated with their surroundings in terms of size, shape, color, texture, and lighting so that they are complementary to the overall design of the building and are not in visual competition with other signs in the area. B, signs shall be proportionate to the dimensions of their location. C, all signs shall complement their surroundings without competing with each other, shall convey their message clearly and legibly, shall be vandal-proof and weather-resistant, and if illuminated, shall not be overly bright for their surroundings. All signs, save for wayfinding signs, must be externally lit. D, exterior lighting of the building and site shall be designed so that light is not directed off the site and a light source is shielded from direct off-site viewing. E, new signs proposed for existing buildings shall provide a compatible appearance with the building signage of other tenants. With multiple signs on a single building, attempt to bring in a unifying element such as signs even where no sign program exists. F, new construction design shall anticipate signage and where necessary, a sign program. New building design should provide logical sign areas allowing flexibility for new users as the building is re-tenanted over time. Designs which provide for convenient and attractive replacement of signs are encouraged. G, the use of roof signs shall be prohibited. H, freestanding signs shall not be greater than five feet in height. Monument sign materials shall reflect the character of the use and the building the sign identifies. I, freestanding sign bases shall be made of permanent durable materials such as concrete or brick. Bases made of textured coated sheet metal are discouraged. J, landscaping and irrigation shall be designed around the base of freestanding signs to integrate the sign with the ground plane and screen out any low-level floodlights. Irrigation shall be designed so it does not damage the sign. K, freestanding signs on poles which have a top-heavy appearance are discouraged. L, driveway directional signs shall only be used for projects where circulation is complex and the traffic must proceed through the site along a specific path for service. Where the layout of the parking lot and driveways are obvious and clearly apparent to the driver entering from the street, directional signage is not appropriate. When not appropriate or needed, such signage can visually clutter the site and will be discouraged. M, any external spot or floodlighting shall be arranged so that the light source is screened from direct view by passersby and so that the light is directed against the sign and does not shine into adjacent property or blind motorists and pedestrians. J, landscaping requirements. One, existing trees shall be maintained as practicable and any new trees shall be carefully selected and located where they will complement the building elevation and shall not block all retail storefront signage from view. Two, screening of mechanical equipment, trash, and loading areas shall be provided through the use of walls, fences, and/or dense evergreen plant materials. Three, landscaping and screening plant materials should not encroach on the public walkways or roadways in a way that impedes pedestrian or vehicular traffic. Four, shrubs or trees that die shall be replaced within one growing season. Five, all new plant materials shall be sized so that the landscaping has an attractive appearance at the time of installation and a mature appearance within three years of planting. Six, all proposed shrubs, except accent, color, or ground cover planting, shall be a minimum of five-gallon size. Shrubs and ground cover plants shall be spaced close enough together to ensure an attractive and mature planting effect. Seven, energy conservation within structures shall be addressed by recognizing the sun exposure on the site and providing or maintaining appropriate tree species. Dissidious trees on the southern exposure, coniferous and broadleaf evergreen trees along the eastern and western exposure, and evergreens along the northern exposure. Eight, tree species, when additional trees are proposed, should be selected with root growth habits that will not cause damage to sidewalks, or such tree species shall be sited away from such landscaped areas. Nine, landscaping plans shall show all obstructions such as streetlight, meters, backflow devices, utility covers, transformers, and similar objects which may affect plant placement and installation limitations. Ten, when constructing new landscape planting areas on surfaces which were previously covered by pavement or structure, all existing asphalt, base rock, or other deleterious materials shall be removed to the depth of the native soil and clean soil shall be used to backfill the planting area. Eleven, all exposed dirt areas shall be covered with bark or mulch or other weed-controlled measures, including as part of final landscape. Twelve, street tree placement shall include consideration for vehicle line of sight, entrance and exit curb cuts, streetlight, and traffic control devices, and other site-specific conditions as part of the design review process. Thirteen, first-year plantings must be watered weekly throughout the growing season. K, parking and loading areas. One, parking shall conform to section seven point one and additionally shall meet the following standards. A, parking lots shall provide well-defined routes for vehicles, delivery trucks, and pedestrians. B, loading areas visible for public street or adjacent property shall be screened with masonry walls supplemented by landscaping if necessary. C, to the maximum extent feasible, landscaped islands with raised curves shall be used to define parking lot entrances, the ends of parking aisles, and the location and pattern of primary driveways and to provide pedestrian walkways where appropriate. D, parking areas shall be screened from adjacent residential uses, streets, and walkways using trees and shrubs adapted to the region of specimen quality conforming to the American Standard for Nursery Stock, American Standards Institute Incorporated, two thirty, Southern Building, Washington DC, two zero 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 five, and shall be planted according to accepted horticultural standards. Berms may be used for screening along the street in conjunction with plant materials. E, where a mix of uses creates staggered peak periods of parking demand, shared parking calculations shall be submitted to reduce total required parking. A reserve area for future development shall be provided on the site plan. F, the use of porous pavement and/or perforated brick or block shall be used to the extent feasible to increase onsite water retention for plant material, groundwater supplies, and to reduce problems associated with runoff. G, within the town's right-of-way, all curbing shall be constructed of granite. L, medical and/or biological research. One, in the establishment, operation, and design of medical and biological research laboratories and facilities with standards and procedures as amended of the National Institute of Health, Athasda, Maryland, and Centers for Disease Control will apply. No facility shall contain or conduct research involving biological safety level three or the equivalent term risk group three classification or higher. Section nine point four point six, applications and permit procedures. A, before an application is made, it is suggested that the applicant become familiar with the bylaws contained in this section as well as those contained in section two point five, which addresses special permits, and section two point six, which addresses site plan, and consult with the development review team prior to the planning board for other bylaws to consider and for any clarifications. B, there are two application procedures for development in GV Fold. One, a concept plan application for the entire GV Fold, without a special permit application for specific land uses to be reviewed by the development review team and presented to the planning board for review and comments. And, two, a special permit application for each proposed use within the GV Fold. C, concept planned application. One, purpose, the concept plan is intended to illustrate the general development plan and expected land uses without requiring the detail and expense of the site plan required as a part of special permit submittal. Two, exemptions. A, the concept plan is not required when the site plan submitted with a special permit application includes all proposed uses and development in the entire GV Fold. B, the concept plan is not required when the proposed development is restricted to an existing structure and development directly related to such structure, parking, landscaping, signs, et cetera. Three, procedure, the following procedure shall apply when an applicant seeks approval only of a concept plan. A, application, the applicant shall file with the board an application for concept plan approval on such form as provided by the board, and such application shall be governed by the requirement section seven point two. B, elements of concept plan. The concept plan shall be prepared by an engineer, architect, or landscape architect, and shall include, one, drawings at a scale of one inch equals one hundred feet. Two, existing topography with two-foot contours to show the general gradient of the site, existing structures, existing roads, and rights-of-way, major topographic features including wooded and open areas, ledge or outcroppings, inland wetlands, watercourses, and floodplain. Three, the land uses and zoning within three hundred feet of the site. Four, boundary description of the district within it. Five, names of all abutting property owners. Six, the location of all proposed roadways, parking areas, setbacks, easements, land use areas, open space areas, and access locations from connecting roads and driveways within the site to the existing public road system. Seven, the site shall be divided into general land use areas identified as one or more of the specially permitted uses, e.g., retail, restaurant, office, research lab, et cetera. Eight, proposed building footprints and location of parking area. Nine, letters from the Water Department and the Water Pollution Control Authority stating our service is to be provided to the proposed land uses. Ten, a preliminary traffic analysis prepared by a professional engineer, which shall include but not be limited to the following. A, land use, site and study area boundaries. B, existing and proposed site use. C, existing and proposed roadways and intersections. D, existing and proposed roadways and intersection capacities and volumes. E, trip generation and design hour volumes. F, trip distribution. G, trip assignments. H, existing and projected traffic volumes. I, levels of service of all affected intersections for the design hour. J, future traffic impact analysis. One, short-term horizon one year after occupancy. Two, long-term horizon twenty years after occupancy. Eleven, a preliminary stormwater discharge plan prepared by a professional engineer, which shall include as a minimum the following. A, a map showing project location, description of the property, acreage, topography, identification of major drainage ways involved, proposed type of development, identification of wetlands based on soils map, and a reference to any flood hazard area delineation study applicable to the site. B, a map of the tributary drainage basin determining the location and magnitude of flows from upstream of the site based on current development or zoning, whichever provides the highest runoff volumes. C, a conceptual drainage plan showing how intercepted and onsite flows will be received and transported. D, designated points of discharge from the site accompanied by a general analysis of how existing downstream facilities will handle this discharge. E, proposed rights-of-way required for drainage easements and detention areas. F, stormwater storage volume required. G, location of storage areas. Twelve, narrative and illustrative elevations of design elements explaining how various design elements, landscaping, architecture, signage, street design, et cetera, contribute to a unified appearance that is harmonious both internally and with surrounding properties in terms of scale, materials, and color. Thirteen, a table indicating the following. A, areas of the site for each proposed land use. B, the amount of building floor area proposed for each land use. C, number of parking and loading spaces for each land use. D, wetland areas, floodplain areas, area of ledge or outcroppings. E, overall lot coverage. F, and building heights. Fourteen, limits of phases where development is proposed in phases. Fifteen, such other relevant information as the applicant may wish to submit or the board may request. Four, required findings, in approving a concept plan, the board shall find, A, the application and concept plan are complete. B, that the proposed location of the land use areas on the site avoids placement of incompatible uses adjacent to one another. C, that the transition between the different proposed uses is suitable and that adequate buffering is provided. D, that the proposed land uses and development patterns satisfy the purpose and intent of the regulation as set forth in section one and the standards and requirements of sections five through six. Five, changes to concept plan. Changes to an approved concept plan are required to be approved by the board. D, GV Fold special permit application. One, a special permit application in conformance with section two point five, which includes submission of a site plan as outlined in section two point six, is required for each proposed use. A special permit application is also subject to the following requirement. A, concept plan, a concept plan must be submitted with the special permit applications for proposed use or uses if not previously submitted. The board shall act on the concept plan prior to acting on a special permit application. B, traffic report, report prepared by professional traffic engineers stating that traffic conditions as described in the approved concept plan traffic report have not changed or if they have, in what way. C, a tabular statement of zoning conformance with respect to each land use type contained on the concept plan. D, in addition to the criteria for special permit approval, the requirements and findings of this section must be met. Two, changes to special permit site plan. Changes to an approved special permit site plan are to be approved by the board. Three, change in uses within existing structures is also permitted for situations where a use has already been approved in accordance with these bylaws upon review and approval by the planning board. When such use does not change the compatibility of such new use with those existing within the structure and the change in use does not result in expansion of space greater than twenty-five percent or five thousand square feet, whichever is greater. A, the development review team. A, the development review team will review and will forward any such requests to the board for approval. B, the development review team may require such information as it deems appropriate to evaluate any such application, including those listed in subsection C of this section. C, the town planner shall make a report of any decisions made under this section to the board at the next regular meeting of the board following such decision. Section nine.
Thank you, Councilor Mike City.
You're welcome.
Uh, Council Steve John. Some other amendment to this which were similar. The uranium one, the code of bylaws. And the sentence that we all agreed and accepted as amendments to the other bylaw. The only additional one that he has is all relevant FAA height or other requirements that will be met and necessary to protect flight path upper airport in section nine point four point five point F point five. Add to the end of that, so Council Steve. You're muted, Mr. Sir.
I got it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I wanted to add that while I was listening to that, that reading again, something else jumped out at me too, uh, which is section nine point four point five F one, where it has currently a buffer strip of seventy-five feet from any, from a, for any new non-residential development from residential abutting properties. And I was thinking about it and going, are there any parcels down in the Globe Village that aren't already heavily developed? That would even have allow that much of a buffer? I mean, maybe that's a question to you, to Larry or Dave, because it, I jumped, I looked at it and I quickly Googled it and that's larger than an acre. An acre is, a standard acre is sixty-six feet by six hundred and sixty. So that would be wider than your standard acre. And there's not a lot of, a lot of bigger, bigger than acre properties down there that I can think of.
Go ahead, Larry. Larry, I think you have your hand up, go ahead.
Yes, well, I was gonna answer Gus, I mean, it's, it's an interesting point, but I, I wanted to make a general statement about this. What Gus proposes here as, as amendments to the GV fold, I don't have any, any problems with any of the four that are listed here at all. What I want to remind the board, I mean, the council, excuse me, I apologize, wrong term. Is that when you create a bylaw, when the planning board creates a bylaw, when we recreate subdivision rules and regulations, special permit rules and regulations, we're trying to create a bylaw or a law or a requirement that is as good as it can be, as restrictive as it should be, that enables the planning board to function as it should function and to enable a set of guidelines, because really these are, these are requirements, but they're guidelines also for the board. There are things to say, okay, have we done this? Have we done this? Have we done this? There are guidelines so that you complete a process. I just, as far as the Globe Village, it's a very densely packed area of property. But somebody can buy property, tear down buildings, and now you have empty space. And now you have empty space and if it's next to residential areas, then there is the possibility. But there is also the possibility, and town council should remember this, that an applicant can ask for a reduction or a waiver on these because it is a special permit. And the planning board has the authority to reduce these, to waiver some of the requirements, to do whatever. But if we don't list them, then we don't have them to begin with. So this is a reference point. So Councilor Steve's is absolutely correct, maybe seventy-five feet is too much. But it isn't dependent on the circumstances. And you can't just take it out and say, well, it'll never happen, because it could very well happen. And it's better to have something there on the book that the board can use as a guide than to not have it.
So Steve.
Um, yeah, I wasn't thinking of just eliminating an entire, I was actually thinking of fifty, but.
Well, it becomes, you know, Gus, I'm, I'm sorry, counselor, it just becomes a, you know, you have to, you have to figure out some figure that you put down there that you're comfortable with and then you can say, okay, we can go up or down depending on the applicant, depending on the situation, depending on the property. So we put seventy-five feet in there, we felt it was good as a beginning point.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not married to this one, I would, I just wanted to throw it out there just to.
I, I understand that, I understand that. And as far as the other amendments, I don't have a problem with them. I mean, the last one a little bit, if, to determine the following in writing citing relevant evidence, well, I think that's almost, that's almost a given because that's what you have to do when you're writing a determination. But to put it in there, I don't have a problem with that. So I don't have a problem with, with any of the things that you're proposing here, counselor.
Any other amendments to discuss? So the first one, amendment six nine, nine point four, point five, point C, point five, uranium twenty-three S. I have your motion.
I'm moved.
Second.
I get it.
All right. Any?
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Daniel.
Yes.
Counselor Dow.
Yes.
Counselor Catrana.
Yes.
Counselor Joe Van.
Yes.
Counselor Lazo.
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
Yes.
And Counselor Steve.
Yes.
To section nine point four point five point C, point seven, change code of bylaws, is there a motion?
I'm moved.
Second. Discussion. None, roll call.
Counselor Daniel.
Yes.
Counselor Dow.
Yes.
Counselor Catrana.
Yes.
Counselor Joe Van.
Yes.
Counselor Lazo.
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
Yes.
Counselor Steve.
Yes.
And Counselor Adams.
Yes.
And to section nine point four point five point F point five add the following sentence at the end. All relevant FAA height or other requirements that will be met as necessary to protect the flight path to upper airport, is there a motion?
Second. I get it.
Any discussion on that? None, roll call.
Counselor Dow.
Yes.
Counselor Catrana.
Yes.
Counselor Joe Van.
Yes.
Counselor Lazo.
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
Yes.
Counselor Steve.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
And Counselor Daniel.
Yes.
To section nine point four point six point C, point four, the beginning, deciding whether to approve a concept plan, the board shall determine the following writing by relevant evidence, is there a motion?
I'm moved.
Second.
Back in. Discussion. None, roll call.
Counselor Catrana.
Yes.
Counselor Joe Van.
Yes.
Counselor Lazo.
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
Yes.
Counselor Steve.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Daniel.
Yes.
And Counselor Dow.
Yes.
Are any further amendments that anybody wishes to introduce? Okay. Item twenty-three, motion, vote to amend the Southbridge Zone bylaw by adding section nine point four, Gold Village Flex Overlay Zone. Is there a motion?
Second.
Second.
Uh, any further discussion on that? Second, roll call.
Counselor Joe Van.
Yes.
Counselor Lazo.
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
Yes.
Counselor Steve.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Daniel.
Yes.
Counselor Dow.
Yes.
And Counselor Catrana.
Yes.
I have twenty-four amendments to the Southbridge Zone bylaw, section four, use to regulations including table one, table of uses first reading, uh, January twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one, February eighth, two thousand twenty-one, this is the third and final reading, February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one. Counselor Mike City.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. On this one, I only read the changes that were provided to me in writing. If they were, they were either in red or they were underlined and that's all I read, I didn't read the entire bylaw. Southbridge zoning bylaws, section four, use regulations. Four point one, general provisions. A, no building or structure shall be erected and no building or structure or land or water area shall be used for any purpose or in any manner except as provided in this section four. B, no building permit shall be issued for any use that is subject to section two point six unless a site plan has been reviewed and approved by the planning board. C, accessory use shall not alter the character of the premises on which it is located or have an adverse impact on the surrounding areas. Adding D, any new construction within the central core requires a special permit from the planning board. Four point four, schedule of uses. A, table one legend. One, Y permitted by right but may be subject to site plan review under section two point six. Two, SP allowed by special permit. Number three has been changed from N prohibited to Y slash SPR allowed by site plan review. Number four has been added, which is N prohibited. For the purpose of this reading, this is the legend of the zoning districts. R one, R two and R three are residential. CC is central core. RB is retail business. GB is general business. OR is office research. M is manufacturing. Southbridge zoning bylaws, table one, schedule of uses. Under residential uses, mixed use building. Zone R two and R three has been changed from N to SP. Under educational and institutional uses, religious uses, all zones have been changed from Y to Y slash SPR. Under government, public services, utilities, commercial ground mounted solar photovoltaic installation up to seven hundred kilowatts or on less than five acres. All zones have been changed from Y to Y slash SPR. Commercial ground mounted solar photovoltaic installation larger than seven hundred kilowatts or on five or more acres with or without battery storage. Zones R one and OR have been changed from N to SP. Commercial battery storage was added, all zones are SP. Business use, retail store, not exceeding five thousand square feet per retail establishment. Zones CC, RB and GB have been changed from Y to Y slash SPR. Between five thousand one square feet and twenty thousand square feet, zones RB and GB have been changed from Y to Y slash SPR. Retail sale of custom goods manufactured and sold exclusively on the premises, e.g. production and retail space for an artisan, crafts person or cabinet maker. Zones GB has been changed from SP to Y slash SPR. Sale of automobiles, boats, motorcycles, trailers, trucks or farm implements. Monument sales, including showroom and outdoor display of merchandise for sale on the premises. Zones RB and GB have been changed from Y to Y slash SPR. Hospitality, food services, entertainment uses. Restaurant, full service, which may include service and an adjacent outdoor seating area. Zones CC, RB, GB, OR and M have been changed from Y to Y slash SPR. Takeout food service establishments such as a deli, pizza shop, bakery, ice cream shop, no drive-through service. Zone CC has been changed from Y to Y slash SPR. Refreshment stand, drive-in or other food service establishment where food or beverages are served inside a building to persons standing or seated outside. Zones CC, RB and GB have been changed from Y to Y slash SPR. Indoor commercial entertainment facilities such as a cinema, bowling alley, skating rink or other enclosed place of assembly operated for profit. Zones RB and GB have been changed from Y to Y slash SPR. Zone OR has been changed from SP to Y slash SPR. Office and related uses, professional or business office. Zone R three has been changed from N to SP. Zones RB, GB, OR and M have been changed from Y to Y slash SPR. Medical or dental office or office of allied healthcare professionals. Zones RB and GB have been changed from Y to Y slash SPR. Bank, zones CC, RB, GB and OR have been changed from Y to Y slash SPR. Trade and service establishments, personal service establishments such as a barber or beauty shop, tailor or dressmaker, dry cleaning or laundry drop-off slash pickup, photography studio. Zones CC, RB and GB have been changed from Y to Y slash SPR. Self-service laundromat, zones R three and GB have been changed from SP to Y slash SPR. Repair shop for bicycles or small household appliances. Zones CC and RB have been changed from Y to Y slash SPR. Licensed body arts establishment, including retail sales of directly associated items only. Zone GB has been changed from N to SP. Place of business of a builder, carpenter, caterer, electrician, mason, painter, plumber, roofer or other trade. Zone GB has been changed from Y to Y slash SPR. Zone OR has been changed from SP to Y slash SPR. Wholesale trade storage, wholesale showroom, storage or warehouse or distribution facility for contractors' equipment, heating fuel, lumber and other building supplies, livestock feed, fertilizer, food, furniture, hardware, metal, print, consumer commodities or similar products. Zone M has been changed from Y to Y slash SPR. Outdoor storage yard of any material or equipment of a type permitted to be stored in a warehouse in the same location. Zone M has been changed from Y to Y slash SPR. Automotive and vehicle services and facilities, commercial parking garage slash lot. Zone CC, RB and GB has been changed from Y to SP. Zone OR and M have been changed from Y to Y slash SPR. Truck terminal or motor freight station servicing or parking of trucks, buses or semi-trailers. Zone OR and M have been changed from Y to Y slash SPR. Manufacturing and related uses, office or industrial campus master plan. Zone OR has been changed from Y to SP. Research, experimental or testing laboratory. Zone OR has been changed from Y to Y slash SPR. Processing, packaging, storage, assembly or treatment of finished or semi-finished products from previously manufactured or processed materials where such activities are carried out whole within an enclosed building, including incidental storage, sales or distribution of such products. Zone GB and M have been changed from Y to Y slash SPR. Zone OR has been changed from SP to Y slash SPR. Accessory uses, added, short-term rental, Airbnb slash VRBO. Zones R one, R two, R three, CC are SP. Zones RB, GB, OR and M are N, added boarding house. Zone R one is N. Zone R two, R three and CC are SP. Zone RB, GB, OR and M are N. Outdoor storage of trucks, supplies and equipment in good working order, incidental to permitted uses. If on a lot of budding a residential district, the outdoor storage shall be screened from view from adjacent properties with evergreen vegetation of sufficient density and height to achieve year-round effective screening. Vegetation shall be maintained in living condition. Privacy fence or solid wall may substitute for vegetation, subject to approval by the town planner. Zone GB has been changed from Y to SP. Zone OR and M have been changed from Y to Y SPR. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Counselor Steve.
Right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, I had no major problems with most of the schedule of uses changes there. Um, one thing, I think, I know I brought this up previously, I'll bring it up again. Um, the big stickling point I have for it is the two areas that cover commercial solar. One on parcels under five acres, the other one parcels over five acres. Um, I have a huge problem with allowing, allowing commercial solar to chop down any more of our forests. And that by putting them in the R one district, that is exactly what we will end up doing. I, either we will be losing a lot more of our forest and/or we will be losing a lot more of agricultural land. Because that's pretty much what those, that zone is, is forest and agricultural land. Um, and I think most of, most of us probably live in an R one zone, especially if they live on the outskirts of town. Um, and I think if you look down some of the streets like out the, like out my window, it's almost all forest. And I actually like it a lot, I like it a lot that way. Um, but also from a, from an ecological and, and climate point of view, the evidence is increasingly showing that leaving our forests to grow, to get to the point where they become mature and large trees and large forests are, is the best way to. to get to the point where they become mature and large trees and large forests are, is the best way to address climate change, to address um the carbon issues. Um, they're far, it's far more effective than the, the short term twenty five, thirty year lifespan of a solar array. Um, and that's my big issue with solar all over the place, and we've already seen the issues we've had for some time now over on Dresser Hill. Where it depends a lot on whether or not the landowner understands the development process. Or they're just so into getting, seeing the money short term that they don't care what happens to the property. And I, and that's ultimately, it kind of, it's an issue where I understand them wanting in many cases to put a, create a nest egg for their kids or to do something with land that they may have been farming for years and can't make ends meet with at this point, and I understand that. But I think in the long term, from a, a large community's larger point of view and larger uh benefits, it is long term detrimental to do that with this land. That's why I am proposing that for the commercial solar on parcels under five acres line, the R one stay no. Um, because you had that changed, all of them as Y with an SPR. Um, I would say the residential zone should be no, and I'm, I, I would think that the other zones should be special permit. And for the commercial solar parcels over five acres, which is the, the big love of what I was just saying a second ago about the, the forested lands. I think those should also be no's in most areas, and especially keeping R one as no. Um, and have, and I think if I remember correctly reading it properly, um, the OR was going to be a Y SPR. I have, I, I'm not too, too tight on that one. I can either go with the, I, I, but I think that probably should be a special permit as well. So that would be the way I'm reading it. I would have it be, just to clarify what I'm saying. Our, for commercial solar under five acres, R one, no, R two, no, R three, no. Central core, RB, GB, OR, and, and M, all SP. Um, for commercial solar on par- parcels over five acres, R one, no, R two, no, R three, no. Central core, no, RB, GB, no, OR, special permit, and manufacturing special permit. I have, I don't have much of a problem with putting small, an acre or two of solar on some of the downtown parcels. Because, especially if they want to reuse a brown field or otherwise they're all excite, as I put in my notes here. Because that's really where they should go. There are some parcels down there that might actually be really beneficial for that kind of a use. Um, but I don't want to see it in our forest and farm like, because we're going to need that going forward.
Thank you. Uh, Mrs. Spinelli, then Council Marquetti.
Um, okay, I'm, I'm going to disagree with Counselor Steves on some conclusions. I'm not going to disagree with him that we need to protect our forests or anything else. But most of the current studies that I've done on forests are saying that you should be cutting down well-developed trees so that you can create sunlight, so that new and developing trees can grow. So the studies on that are somewhat ambiguous. But let's, let's get back to the thing. If I owned the land behind me, for example, there's twenty nine acres and it's for sale, and I wanted to buy that land. Now, there's no use for that land for farming or anything. It's all ledge, it's all, it's not really usable for anything. If you wanted to and you had a couple million dollars, you could put a subdivision in there, and if you could afford to do it, you'd have to put a high price house. But here regardless. If I'm that property owner and now you're telling me that no one, if, if I don't want to farm my land for agriculture and no one else wants to come and lease my land and farm it for agricultural use, then I can do nothing with my property. Because you're saying if someone proposes and they want to put an eight hundred watt thing on there for the next twenty years because no one else has an interest, you're going to put down no and say, no, that's, that's not it? I don't think that's the correct thing at all. I mean, you talk about taking away a person's right to develop and use his own property. And yes, a majority of our land is R one. Granted, it is. But you go up Lebanon Hill, you go to other areas where they had farms, now it's not being developed, it's not being used. And so now we're going to tell those property owners that if they have the opportunity to do this, they can't do it? I don't think that's intelligent at all, and I'm not trying to insult Counselor Steves or anything else. I just don't think that's what we should be doing. And I want to make another point too, just because not only Counselor Steves, but everybody else is saying it. When we make a change, for example, where it says at, it's not yes slash SPR, the change is going from yes to SPR, which is slight site plan review. It's not either or, it's, the change is going to what has been underlined and not crossed out. So I just want to make that clear. But I don't think bylaws like this should restrict it. What we try to do is to be able to control what's going on, to be able to say, okay, if this is what you're proposing, here's what you have to do, and that's the responsibility of the planning board. And, okay. We've had people who have submitted plans to us, the planning board has signed off on plans, and then we've had a contractor go in there and cut down every tree and everything else. And because we don't have any punishment capabilities, it was just, it went by the wayside. And then we have others. But every time something has gone wrong, the planning board has learned from it and said, okay, now we're going to get a little bit tougher with this, and we're going to make sure this is happening. And we're going to make sure, for example, people used to say, okay, we're going to do this, we're going to do the, um, the cleanup facility afterwards, the charge is going to be this amount of money. And then we're going to take off for what we get from salvage and everything else, and so we're only going to put instead of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars into an escrow account, we're, we're only going to put twenty five thousand. Well, the planning board got smart after the first one and said, no, 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 you put in the full amount. And then every year, we're going to review it and make sure that the amount that's being put in there to return this land to its natural state is sufficient to do that. So we've learned from it also. I just think that when we say absolutely no, you can't do this, I think it's the wrong, it's the wrong approach. I think it's wrong for us to do that.
Thank you. Council Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for you. I'm going to have to disagree with Counselor Steves on this one because, mainly because, well, for years, we've fought against, uh, you know, increasing nuclear power, and we fought against liquid nitrogen gas power, and we don't like the methane power up at the, uh, landfill, so what, what's left? You have to have some source of energy, so what's left? Well, solar is left, so I'm going to have to agree with Counselor Spinelli on this one, and I think that we should allow solar po- power, uh, solar plant panels and, uh, leave it the way it is. Thank you.
Council Steves.
Um, I am not objecting to solar on rooftops. I'm not objecting to solar in parking lots, on brown fields. I am objecting to cutting down the trees because the evidence shows we need them. You know, Ca- uh, Mr. Spinelli, a moment ago, well, pointed out, and he's accurate about, in many cases, the, the bylaw change here, and especially the, the schedule of uses, actually gets tougher. When you switch from yes to a yes site plan review, that actually is another layer of protection in many of those places, and that's a good thing. And there are a couple of places where it gets a little weaker. Um, but I don't really have many of the problems with, with those other areas, these, but these two areas. I think that the long term interests of our community argue that we need to be protecting the land pretty much as it is right now. He pointed out, he made, uh, Mr. Spinelli made the argument that if he had bought the land behind him and it was all ledgy and you can't do much of anything development wise, then yes, that's probably true. You probably can't do a whole lot of it development wise without a bazillion dollars to, to blow things up, which you probably shouldn't be doing anywhere. Quite honestly, if the, the, part, a huge part of the problem is that we all, we have a tendency to only look at land from a development point of view. The problem is, there's a, there are thousands of species already living there beside us that are literally our relatives. They are, they, they share our DNA in large percentage. Varying percentages, but a large percentage. And, you know, the, the, for people who own that land, yeah, they may not be able to farm crops on it, although some places they can. Um, and they may be able, they may be able to harvest some of the wood with a reasonably well-developed foresting plan. Does, there are a whole bunch of people out there that do have those. However, um, I'd, to, to go with what you had said a few minutes ago about um, the, the older trees being needed to be removed for, for habitat, sometimes that happens, but, but mother nature tends to do that quite well in her own. But the, the catch is that with, right now, with the, with the carbon issues that we are facing, the older trees also suck down a lot more of the carbon that we need to be taking, removing from the atmosphere. And they do it much more, much more long term than solar does. A solar, the solar arrays will last twenty five or thirty, maybe forty years at the out, at the length longest. Whereas the trees, once you've cut them down and you try to restore them to the original stead, at the state, it takes a good century to get back to the original state. We lose decades in the middle of, of climate impact that we cannot afford to have at this point. We're already decades behind the eight ball now. And while I agree with Mike saying that we have issues with, with nuclear power and the various other kinds of polluting fossil fuels and things like that, that, that is a huge trouble. And as I said, if we use solar in sane places, I can deal with that. But we got to remember that even solar and wind, although they are better than nuclear and fossil fuels, they are not the panacea. The ultimate, what we ultimately need to do is look at how much we waste. Because there is a vast level of energy wasted out there all over the world. And if you look at the, even the, uh, Energy Information Agency's data and other major organizations that track this kind of stuff show that a good fifty percent in some cases of the transmitted energy is lost. Huge percentages are just wasted. We, we use way too much energy in general when we don't need to. And I think it's really an issue where, right now, we need to start focusing on conservation and protecting our larger ecosystem in the long term, rather than focusing on the short term gains for financial benefits that would go, would garner to a handful of people in the community and end up leaving the rest of the community holding the bag for cleaning up the mess later. And that's much worse than fossil fuels and nuclear, but it's also a problem with solar.
Got that?
That's it. Thank you for that.
And Council Alzo.
Yeah, I, uh, there's a lot being said on this subject, uh, in I, I yields to the thirty eight years that Larry Spinelli has on that committee. And I know Mr. Pay is right on his heels as far as how many years they've been there. When I first got involved in council, Larry was on planning board probably for eight years at that point. The, the, the problem I'm having is the town gave town land on the St. Angelo to build solar fields, uh, on our properties near schools. How do we control the massacre? I mean, I go to Southbridge High, we built, because I was the chairman of the building committee, we built the high school on a plot of land, which was a country that we want to preserve the views in the hill and everything like that. And there was no oversight on how they put these solar fields in. They just went in, wiped out the hillside, and just put them in. And now, to your experience, Larry, I don't know what, what the answer is. We can argue over solar or wind or fossil fuel. The solar panel land lasts twenty years. You buy them, by the time they're paid off, you have to get rid of them, they're going to be hazardous waste because of the way they're built inside. My point is, if you're going to have a solar farm or a solar zone, or whatever you want to call it, how do you control the approach when they install? Is there a way to do that, or do we just zone it and they go in and do it? Because we have more wild animals now on our garage property that were pushed from the Dresser Hill area. Uh, I mean, real animals we never saw before. And that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about too much of anything is no good, and I think that when you look to, look at hides manufacturing and they put the solar panels on the roof, you really don't get to see them. But when you wipe out a hillside and you put them in, all of a sudden, it doesn't look so sweet. And I'm not sure what the answer is, because I do believe in what you're saying, Larry, that when a person owns the land, where's the sacrifice, and where's it start and stop, and the right to own the land and do what you want with it is another discussion that could, we could have on another day. I'm not sure I'm coming up with an answer or an amendment. But, uh, I share the concerns of the fallout from these solar panels. Um, probably not as much. I'm not a, not going to go down as a tree hugger, and I'm not an anti-development guy, but, uh, it has to be a balance, and I really do trust our planning board, the creation of what you're doing to try and keep all the factors in balance and still be fair to the homeowner. But it's a tough balance, and I, uh, I tip my hat on the work that you're doing on these. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Larry?
I'm just going to add a quick thing. Uh, thank you for the kind words. Unfortunately for us, for all of the solar fields that have been approved, there's also state regulations and everything else that do not favor us putting more restrictions on it than what we already have. My concern with Counselor Steves is, you know, he's associating everything with taking trees down. But there is a lot of open land right now that is in R one, and it's not being used for farming, and it's not being used for agricultural uses. And I'm concerned that if you put no here instead of SP, now you've taken away something that is inherently part of that property owner's right. Instead of trying to control it, you've just taken it away. Now Gus says, well, you know, all, we shouldn't be just looking at land as investment. Uh, I agree, but that's not the philosophy that runs the business world or our world right now. It's always, you know, return on investment. It's always this and it's always that. I, I'm in favor of trying to control it as best you can. And I think when you say no, you've taken away someone's rights. And I would rather say SP and let a board of six or seven people with responsibility. And you people have been kind enough to appoint us and over and over again for quite a few years. It's kind of a nice compliment. Thank you very much. But you know, there are certain things that we can do, certain things that we can't do. And to me, taking away a property owner's right or his ability to use his property to me is just, it, it's just wrong. It's just terribly wrong. Whereas if we put SP, special permit, at least we have some control over. We can try to do it as best as we can. Now, some people take property and there's all trees and everything else. There's nothing that the planning board can do about that. That's, that's the way it is. And they buy it because they can get the land so cheap, or the landowner wants to have it developed so he can get some money from it. That's out of the control of the planning. That's out of the control of the planning board. But what we can do is why special permit is to say, okay, it's got to have accessway, it's got to have drainage. Now, yes, we rely on the building department and everybody else to help us out. If they see that it's not being done correctly, we, you know, we need to enforce what we put into effect. That's part of our problem too. I'm just saying that I think it's wrong. My own, speaking for myself, I think it's wrong to take away an ability of a landowner to use his property to his economic advantage, especially now that there's no, uh, al- almost no farming being done in Southbridge. We're not going to take up all of the available land and put it into solar farms. It's just not going to happen. Anybody who thinks that, I think is. So, I think you want the protection in there by putting it to S P. I don't think it's right to take anyone's, that privilege away from a homeowner or a landowner by saying no.
Thank you, Larry. Uh, I get Counsel Dow and Counsel Steve's, but I just have one quick question. Currently on less than five acres, it's allowed now, right? It's, it's a yes, right? Across the board? And now you're looking to change it to yes with special permit under the five acres? I'm looking at the chart. I just want to make sure I'm clear.
Yes, we're taking it to the sp- uh.
Go ahead, Mr. Perry. So right now it's allowed.
Site plan review, it's, right now it's yes.
Right, so anybody could do whatever they want under five acres. And you're looking to restrict it a little bit by going, okay, site plan review. And where Counsel Steve's wants an absolute no. So I just want to make sure that's clear.
We're going site plan review, we're going special permit, it's S P, not S P R.
On uh, on less than five acres, I thought it says S P R.
No.
S P R.
It says Y slash S P R. That's what I have.
Site plan review.
Uh, it is, it is yes, right now going to site plan review. So we have some control over.
Okay.
Oh, alright, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm looking at five acres or more.
Allowed by point site plan review. It's Y slash S P R.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, it's. Well, that's what it says. I just read what it said, that's all.
Yeah.
Yup, yup.
The site plan, alright, Counsel Dow.
Thank you, Mr. Trey, for you. Uh, question, I don't know if I'm going to ask it right or who's going to answer it. If we say no, and I agree with Counsel Steve, did anywhere that person like Mr. uh, David or Spinelli saying if somebody have a backyard mountain, they can get a waiver from the zoning of appeal or something? Or no way after you say no, you can't get any?
Yeah. It's just no, you can't, you can't do it. There's no waiver, there's no nothing, it's no.
Yeah, true.
There any, any, no, no way you can like, put some word there about, you say stone wall, whatever. I mean, I, I like to see tree because you're driving, you know, everywhere now you just see, you know, glass, glass, you know. Actually, we're losing people come and build, people open uh, businesses. Uh, animal is, you know, it's, it's kind tied and the popula- population is increasing. And uh, technically you're not allowed to build tree duckers anymore, you're not allowed, you're not allowed. And what I know, South British knowing was businesses and big company and tree duckers and a lot of large family and uh, I don't know if you guys want to eliminate all that, so. I, I will support Counsel C. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Steve, and then Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, to go back, uh, thank you, thank you Counsel Ado for that support. Um, to go back to uh, to what Counsel, uh, to Mr. Spinelli said, um, you mentioned uh, that it was taking away rights. We're not taking away rights. Um, as you pointed out, it's going, it, 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 we're not, I'm not taking away a right from the commercial solar on over five acres. R one is currently a no. And I want to keep it a no. You want to make it as a special permit, I think it's, it's detrimental in the long term. You, you argue correctly that we're using much of our land at the moment for agriculture. However, the way I see it, I think, I think where things are going, we're going to need that land for agriculture in the not-too-distant future. It may not be in the next decade. But I think we are going to need it. And that by trying to plant around a solar panel, solar panels is pretty difficult. You can't grow much around solar panels. Um, without taking them out because they tend to be anchored in, in concrete. Um, and they tend to block out, tend to block out the sun to the stuff that you want to grow. So I, I'm not in favor of that. Um, yes, I understand that we have been, we have gotten so used to having our food shipped in from a thousand or two thousand miles away. And we can't afford to keep doing that anymore. We're going to have to relocalize our food supply, we're going to have to relocalize pretty much everything we do. And this, yes, admittedly to, to kind of go back to what Counsel Marketti said a while ago, part of that is going to be energy. But I do not think that, the, I think in the, we'll have to balance that out by putting it in places where we're already overdeveloped. Uh, to, to go back to what Counsel Lazo mentioned earlier about the schools, um, I totally agree with you that the area that the solar panels went up around the schools is a huge, is a huge problem. And unfortunately, I did support that at the time and I regret doing so. Because it has become a huge mess. We have got too many of these solar panel arrays all over the place on town land. Um, and it was not a wise move on my part at the time. That's one of the reasons why I'm strongly against it now. Um, but, and also, so, and I do like the idea, at least in theory, that going from a, a yes, as it is now for under five acres on all of these parcels to site plan review is making it a little bit stronger. But I still think that it doesn't belong in the residential, the residential districts. It is essentially a commercial, if not industrial use. It's energy production, it is not growing something. Solar farming is not solar farming, there's no such thing. We're not growing a thing. It's creating energy, it's, it's an industrial use almost by definition. It's really does belong in the industrial or ma- manufacturing zones. I can see it being in the business zones because it is a business use. But, you know, I, to go back to the whole argument that I made earlier about the land, we need to start recognizing that the land is not just our land. We are not the only beings that live on this planet. And the fact that we have assumed we can do whatever we want to the land that we live on is one of the reasons why we're in the mess we're in. With climate, with pollution, with all of the other issues that we are now trying to figure out what we're going to do about that quite frankly are going to potentially sink, not necessarily the generation of anybody who's here on the council right now, but the next generation down. It's going to be the one who's going to get whacked up the side, the skull, three ways to Sunday by this. If we don't deal with this and start putting in protections for our ecosystem now. We should have done it thirty years ago. But now we have a chance to do it, at least in a small scale in Southbridge. And I think we have to do it, we need to start doing it now. We can't keep waiting, keep, we can't keep playing games like this. And, and prioritizing development over our long-term survival. Thank you.
Okay, thank Counsel. To Ryan.
Move the question, Mr. Chair.
There was no, there was no, there was no motion in an amendment on it.
Well, there hasn't been a motion or a second on it yet.
Not on that amendment, no, it was his uh, proposal.
So moved.
There's a motion in the second on the amendment. Any further discussion on the amendment?
Yeah, can I say something?
Yeah, quickly because it is getting late and I think Counsel Steve's has stated almost everything I think you're going to say. I'm not going to put words in.
No, this is different.
Please make it quick, please make it quick.
I sent an email to you all on February eighth, um, about this. Um, and I just want to highlight a few points to consider. The flammability of the lithium ion batteries and of the panels themselves. Did anyone speak to the fire department regarding their concerns and suggestions? Um, one recommendation I was told by the deputy fire chief was a spray-on flame retardant called PV Stop. Um, this is called the DC danger zone. Um, firefighters have so many toxic chemicals to deal with. PV Stop stops the DC current that is still coursing through the panels, which makes the fire more intense. Um, I mean, it stops it from making it more intense. Um, so, um, let's not add to the danger of their already dangerous job. If you're going to allow PV panels, um, require this PV Stop um, to be in there. And have you considered requiring um, decommissioning costs for these under five acre panels? Even, even a smaller array on less than five and on personal property could be, uh, should be a consideration. Because if those people die or whatever, you're going to have to deal with it. And um, lastly, uh, the northeastern USA is not a great spot for solar. This is a marketing thing. They just want everybody to buy solar. Um, so this is not going to be the cash cow that everybody thinks it's going to be. Um, so, uh, oh. Okay, uh, in conclusion, um, four point two B of the Southbridge zoning bylaws says that all uses that cause a potential or present hazard to human health and safety and the environment through emission, smoke, particulate matter, noise, or vibration, or through fire or explosion hazard or glare or release of toxic chemicals in all districts are expressly prohibited. So that means this is not allowed. And, and I got that from the town website. Um, the zoning rules. So I urge you to all vote no for the health of the community. Thank you.
Okay. You mean, oh, go ahead, Mr. Perry.
The decommissioning costs are always considered every time we uh, work with these. It's always factored in.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, that was going to be my question, Mr. Perry, that would be part of your site plan review, right? All these things as they raise concerns on would be, uh, if the fire department had, had concerns, it would be part of the site plan review and ability to comment on this stuff? Um, is that not correct?
Yes, all the time.
Alright. Oh, alright, I'm sure, uh, no, uh, let's see, sorry. What did I have? So those were the amendments as proposed. Are there any further questions on the amendment from Counsel Steve's? Roll call.
We're holding on the amendment, Mr. Chairman?
The amendment as proposed by Counsel Steve.
Okay.
Counsel Adams?
No.
Counsel Daniel?
No.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Counsel Katrona?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
No.
Counsel Lazo?
No.
Alright, Scott. Counsel Marketti?
No.
Counsel Ryan?
No.
And Counsel Steve's?
Yes.
Any other amendments to this? Of yours? There are none. Sorry, I lost my page, so I'll have to go back. The hours, let's see, yeah. Hold on, let me go back to my agenda. I didn't print the last page, yeah. So I just want to make sure I read the motion correctly. It is, motion to amend the Southbridge zoning bylaws, section four, use regulations including table one, table of uses, is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
Motion second, any discussion? And none, roll call.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Dow?
No.
Counsel Katrona?
No.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Lazo?
Yes.
Counsel Marketti?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan?
Yes.
Counsel Steve's?
No.
And Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Motion countered. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate all the hard work on that. Um, I appreciate them actually working with you on that. I'm going for it. This is for. Counsel Lazo.
Hi, uh, quick minute, I'd just like to thank uh, Mr. Marketti for putting together his presentation on the readings to limit the painful, the painstaking uh, listening of all three readings. It's uh, tough without reading, without waving them. But I give a, I give him credit the way he uh, did it and he sped it up a little bit for us. So, Mike, thank you very much for your work.
You're welcome. It wasn't too fast.
No, it was perfect, actually. Thank you, Counselor. Appreciate it. Makes it easier than trying to listen to everybody else, lose track and all that, so, thank you. Uh, it'll be different when we're in uh, chambers though, because we won't have the ability to do it uh, that way, maybe, but maybe we can work around.
I think we can.
Yeah. Anything else, Counsel Alzo? What do you all say?
Thank you.
Counsel Marketti?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I got a couple of things. First of all, uh, we voted on removing the indemnification bylaw tonight. And uh, I was, I was fine with that. From what I understand from talking to a couple of uh, residents in town, the problem is the indemnification. There are some uh, public safety personnel like firemen and policemen who have gotten injured on the job. And then if they have to go on disability because of their injury, they, they get sent a letter telling them that the town's not responsible for their medical bills anymore. So that's something that I just think, I would like to see the counselors take up at some point. I think we need to talk about this and find out what we can do to take care of these, these uh, safety personnel. I mean, they, they were injured on the job and it just seems outrageous to me that we wouldn't cover their medical bills. I know that Counsel Adams has been talking about this and been trying to deal with it. And I would like to be kept informed of it and maybe if I could, I'd like to sit in on a couple of the meetings to find out what's, what's going on with this. So I don't know what we can do about it, but we certainly can find the money for the things, for other things. We should be able to find money. There aren't that many of them that have been, have been injured on the job. I'll yield to the town manager if he wants to respond.
Mr. Town Manager? I would have to say, from the information and the research I've done, the information you're getting is not accurate. When somebody goes out on a disability, they are entitled to a seventy percent disability retirement covering the last, the highest pay they've received in the last twelve months. And they're immediately qualified for towns' um, retired disability insurance, which is the fifty-fifty insurance. Um, that is what is standard for most uh, employees that go out on an I O D retirement. Um, it's not that people aren't covering. What they're asking is, a handful of towns in the Commonwealth have adopted chapter forty-one, section one hundred B, which the town would then be liable for all insurance payments or insurance indemnification uh, for the rest of the lives of, of certain individuals who go out in these types of disabilities. I'm working on a memorandum, I'm happy to circulate it to the council. Um, the council addressed this in nineteen eighty-four here in Southbridge and they voted it down. Um, a lot of communities have not accepted it and some of them that have are larger communities. Um, I've spoken with our insurance company on this. You prospectively open the door to anybody who's ever retired on a disability in this town to come on. The insurance companies are not going to look to cover it. We would be paying it out of our pocket, is what they've told us. So we would be self-insuring anybody that we want to do. And there is no way of forecasting what those bills will be for the rest of the life of any one of those individuals that you want to open this up to. So it, it, you know, I understand that people may want to do it, but the reason they offer the accelerated retirement uh, based on the last twelve months of, of service and offer immediate retirement benefits to these individuals is to compensate them for their loss. And they're not precluded from going back out to work. If they can't work as a police officer or firefighter, it doesn't exclude them from uh, working somewhere that they may be capable in the private sector. And that disability retirement gives them the, the enhanced monies and still offers them the ability, ability to work elsewhere. But as I said, I'll put it all together in a, a letter and I'll send it out to anybody. I talked to Counselor Adams about this and I've had a few other counselors inquire. It's just difficult to put it all together. I have it all sitting on the. Counselors inquire. It's just difficult to put it all together. I have it all sitting on my desk. Um, but since it's brought up here, I'll work on it.
Thank you very much. I mean, that's what I would like to sit down and talk about this and find out what's going on, cuz you know, it is difficult to know. Exactly what, what's going on with this. So I appreciate it if you would keep me informed on it. The other thing is, um. I, I mentioned to you that the sidewalks downtown are not being shoveled. I, I took a ride down there this afternoon and. The sidewalk on Main Street right in front of Village Photo would look pretty bad and also in front of the uh. Edwards Block Building. So I'd appreciate it if that would get cleaned up. It may have been cleaned up since, since I've been there. But like I said this afternoon, it still looked pretty bad and some residents were complaining about slipping down there, so I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
With Tom and. For you, Mr. Chair, just so you know, I, I did take your email. I did forward it to both the D P W and the police departments. Since my understanding that many of the business owners that weren't in compliance were cited and that's typically the. Procedure that we do. They get cited first before we'll put our staff out there to, to clean it up because. We don't wanna clean it up first on their behalf. So continuing to work on that, but we are taking action and going after the business owners that are taking care.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Counsel Marketti? Counsel Steve's?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have one quick thing. Um, that the library is still doing programs. Um, and they've got a series of spring gardening programs with the Blackstone Veggie Gardeners. Um, starting February twenty-third at six thirty. They're all at six thirties and alternating weeks. Um, with spring gardening on indoor seed starting, herb gardening, going a summer salad, uh, raised bed gardening, organics. Um, every other week from, uh, let's see, February twenty-third, March ninth, uh, March twenty-third, April sixth and April twentieth. And they're all on Zooms on their website. So if you check out the, the library's website, you can get the links to it. That's all I had to say.
Thank you. Counsel Katrona?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All set this evening?
Thank you. Counsel Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I have something I'd like to share. I was working uh, this morning at the gas station on Worcester Street. And uh, I have a lady, a lady came in and asked me if I uh, worked there to put air in her tire. And uh, and she said, I got pulled over by the police. And uh, I look at her, I said, well, what you did wrong? And she's like, because I have a flat tire. So that was nice of the police officer. She pulled over that residence. Have a flat tire, not only pulling uh, residents for a ticket or uh, auto speeding. So that, that was like a funny stories. I wanna thank that police officer. She did that. Uh, you know, small uh, uh, talented people, you know, the residents have a flat tire. Another thing, uh, I have complained seventeen Benefit Street. People bringing car from the French state and uh, sharpening them parts and the car disappear. Uh, if anybody can check that, please, uh, one of the residents uh, uh, talk to me and ask me if I can see what's up over there.
Can you please? Street.
Seventeen, seventeen Benefit Street. Benefit.
Anything else, Counselor? Are you all set?
All set, thank you.
All right, thank you. Counsel Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I just have one thing. Um, I sent a message out last Thursday to my fellow counselors and to. Manager McCall. Um, but in case anyone doesn't know. The Worcester Regional Transit Authority Advisory Board has authorized the use of one million dollars they had acquired through the CARES Act. To extend fare-free riding of the public busing system until June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. So, know that you, um, any of the public buses that come to Southbridge. From the Worcester Regional Transit Authority, you can ride them for free. So just keep that in mind. Um. The R T A um advisory board is keeping in mind the struggle people are going through. I wanna make, wants to make sure that the. Riders don't feel that um, they're not being considered, cuz they are.
Anything else, you all set?
That's it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I didn't really have anything to say until Counsel Marketti uh, piped in about the I O D. Um, I was gonna ask that either Counsel Steve's or Counsel Lazo have it uh, uh, set up an agenda item. Down the road, but I will agree with the town manager, the information Counsel Marketti you received was completely wrong. So thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Daniel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Um, I just have one thing. I'm wondering if the town manager would be able to give us an update. On grants awarded and accepted, uh, awarded to the town and accepted by the town council. And if possible, um, a census to what's in the pipeline. That might be coming down the road at us in the next two months, weeks or months. Uh, there's no rush on this. Uh, just, I'd like to know what it is that's uh, we've, we've gone through and what's coming down the road. And that's it.
Thank you.
Okay, the next meeting is scheduled from, regularly scheduled meeting. It's scheduled for Monday, March eighth, twenty twenty-one and potentially in council chambers.
Thank you.
Can you motion, Mr. Chair? Again. I can roll call.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Counsel Katrona?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Lazo?
Yes.
Counsel Marketti?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan?
Yes.
And Counsel Steve?
Yes.
Good night.